And I can use a handheld recorder to record everything. So that people can listen and make sure that I have things right and I can quote people accurately.
Testing, testing.
I can remember what's the instead of. Well, I I'm missing that possibility.
Well, could you make?
Good evening, folks. Thank you for joining us. We have our agenda August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. First up, we have Joe St. Peter from assessing, and he's going to give us a presentation on the current tax situation in Auburn. Then we're going to kind of morph into some tax relief programs and options.
Mr. Mayor, councilors, good evening. A pleasure to be here. Karen Karen wanted to be here, but she threw her back out, so she is out tonight. I prepared to talk about two kind of property programs that are on people's minds nowadays, namely the property tax deferral program and the property tax stabilization program. And I'll start with the property tax deferral program. The property tax deferral program is alone. It's not new, actually. It's been around. A version of it has been around for a very long time in the state of Maine, although it's sunsetted and they resurrected that program in two thousand and twenty-two. I'm going to talk about the state program. There's actually a municipal program that kind of parallels and mirrors the the state program. The difference being a municipal municipality has the ability to create their own program. One of the downsides of that is that there's no reimbursement from the state if we decide to set up our own program. Under the Constitution, only the legislature has the power of taxation. This includes granting exemptions in programs like the property tax deferral program. So this is a program that is through the state of Maine. So. So the property, the 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 state property tax deferral is a program that is good for some property tax or some property owners. As I said, it's an exemption. It's not an exemption. It is a loan that you have to pay back with interest when you exit the program. There's a few ways to exit the program. You pass away. If you sell the homestead, it's no longer your primary homestead, unless you're absent for health reasons, or in the case of a mobile home or a floating home, I guess, in some communities, you remove it from the state of Maine, then you're no longer eligible for that program. So we have, so as I said, it's really not for everybody. There there can be some problems for the heirs of the estate. They pass away and they've been enrolled in the program for a very long time. You could be talking about a very large tax bill because it's all the taxes that you would have paid while enrolled in the program that the state has paid on your behalf. So there can be a very large bill with interest at the time of, at the time of death or if there's a sale, and that could be a problem for heirs. It's the state of Maine that administers this program. They accept the assessor, the application from the assessor, which includes financial data, which we do not want in our property tax record. So that all goes to the state. We send it along to the state. They maintain a balance sheet with the interest and they send notification to the tax assessor of every community, and they send an annual notice to each enrollee of the program. And they collect that deferred tax from whoever's responsible, be it an heir or the participant themselves, at the end of the program when they when they leave that program. So that's the property tax deferral program. There are some applications over there if anyone's interested. The applications actually are only available for a limited time. If you go to the state website, the application period is January one to April one of every year, and you can't, you can't enroll any other time during, except during that period of time. Property tax deferral applications for your information on the table, and we also have information on our website as well. The other program that's generating a lot of interest right now is the property tax stabilization program. This is brand new. It was just enacted by the legislature. It was kind of a surprise to tax assessors across the state because no one expected this, but it's here and it's very popular. Since applications were available, we've had three hundred and thirty applications, and we expect more. Conservatively, we expect that we could have up to two thousand applications by the December first deadline if they keep at this same pace. So that's a program that you have to be sixty-five or over to to be eligible. You have to be a permanent resident of the state of Maine. You must have owned homestead property for at least ten years. It doesn't have to be contiguous. You could have, you could have been in another municipality for eight years, moved to Auburn and been here for two years, and you would be eligible, and you would be otherwise eligible for the homestead exemption. You don't actually have to have the homestead exemption, but you would be eligible for that exemption if you're going to be in the program. So how it works, it freezes your taxes, not your assessment, your taxes. There's a crucial difference. So when you enroll in the program, if your taxes were, say, five thousand dollars for for a year and they, and your taxes would be assessed at five thousand one hundred dollars the following year, you're locked in at the five thousand dollars. We get a lot of questions about how it works. One of the primary questions this year has been, well, is it for last year's taxes? Unfortunately, not. The program didn't exist last year, so it starts with this calendar year. This is the first year that you can lock in your taxes. So you have to apply by December first of every of every year, and we have to vet the applications for your age qualification and also for your residency. Most of the time, it's fairly simple. Someone, the 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 people that are applying, at least in Auburn, have been in their home for ten years, so that's very easy. But if they come from another municipality before Auburn, we have to vet those with the with the other with the other communities. And again, it's very popular. We're getting a lot of questions about this particular program, and I can answer questions when I'm through here. We we, of course, have the more traditional exemption programs. We have homestead. We have four thousand three hundred and forty-one as of commitment. The full value of the homestead exemption is twenty-five thousand dollars because we ratio it's twenty-three thousand two hundred and fifty. One of the things that surprises me is that even though that sounds like a lot of homestead, I think there's a lot more people that are eligible because they they come into our office and they really know nothing about the program. So as a kind of a, as this being a public meeting, I'd encourage anyone who's watching and anyone who's in the room to promote the idea that if you, that you may qualify for the exemption, you should apply for it. And if you do have the exemption, I think it's equally important to update your information so we know you continue to qualify for the exemption. And I, the, so homestead is pretty important, and periodically the state of Maine will revise the homestead. I I think it started off at a at a very low number. When I started working for the city, it was twenty thousand, or excuse me, I think it was fifteen thousand dollars, and it it went from fifteen to twenty to twenty-five, and they constantly talk about revisions to that. Of course, we also have the widows, or excuse me, the veterans exemptions, which includes exemption for veterans, their widows. A kind of a facet of that is the paraplegic, which is a fifty thousand dollar exemption that veterans are eligible for. You have to be a resident of Maine, served during a primary war period. You have to be sixty-two years or older or totally disabled. And that does not have to be on your primary residence. In fact, we have some veterans exemptions on parcels of land that they, that the veteran chose to put put that on as opposed to their residence. We also have the blind exemption. You have to be legally blind to to gain that. There are parsonage exemptions, and that is kind of a a presentation of our property tax exemptions and programs that are available through the state. So I'm prepared to talk about those and any kind of emerging questions about property tax and changes that we've made if if anyone wants to answer.
Mayor, council, maybe just a couple of things before we jump into questions and answers. One, I just want to talk a little bit about that property tax stabilization program, the new one that Joe just mentioned. One thing that we've been hearing feedback on regarding that is, oh, you increased my taxes because this program was coming out. This was a tabled bill in Augusta. It was not one that was on the docket. The mayor and I serve on the LPC, which is the Legislative Policy Committee. This was not anything that was brought forward. It was tabled from the previous legislative period, and so we, this was not something that we saw coming. When we certified, we being the city assessor, when she sent the certified ratio to the state, that was done in May, prior to this being brought forward. This was one of those eleventh hour bills that was brought forward and passed at the legislature. So it did, had nothing to do with the alignment of moving in this direction. That was already something that was in motion on the city side. So I just want to make sure you have that information in case you're asked by someone in the public. The other thing I want to share is Council Walker had sent me an email, a request of a program that we should consider, as well as the mayor had given me some information, as well as Council Milks, regarding taxpayer relief, what we might be able to do within the city, how could we leverage funds that we might have available to our our property owners. So staff took a look at this last week. I met with our finance director, our city assessor, Joe, as well as some other key staff members, talking about what types of programs could be eligible, what could we look at, and what could we make available as far as relief. And then we're referring to this as a homeowner relief. Under ARPA, that is an eligible, we could provide relief because of the pandemic to homeowners. And so that's a eligible program that we could leverage the funds to make that available. As we went through, what could that look like? We could use homestead exemption as a criteria. So if you are currently receiving homestead exemption or you're eligible for homestead exemption, then you could receive a relief check from the city of Auburn. The, with, this will do a couple of things, too. As Joe mentioned, we do believe that there are still several that have not applied for homestead and are eligible, and that could be an immediate immediate tax relief for them if they could bring twenty-five thousand dollars off their home value. So that could certainly help. What we could do with this is, even if they're not currently receiving homestead, as long as they're eligible and they apply for homestead exemption, that can make them eligible for for this relief that's being proposed. And this would be to provide a three hundred dollar relief check for every homestead, and as Joe mentioned, it's four thousand and some odd property owners currently. That would include if you are multi, you have a multi-unit and you're homeowner occupied, which means that you're receiving that homestead for that building, then you would be eligible for this as well. Even though some of those did not see that increase, that market adjustment will be happening for some other categories as we move forward. So this is just, this is just good, good practice. We should probably move forward across the board, anyone that receives homestead exemption. On average, Joe was talking about average, he had given us some information regarding what was the average increase for single-family homes. This would cover a third of that average, and so some individuals may have, their taxes may have only, may have just increased around three hundred dollars. So it would cover the full amount. Others, it could be around two thousand dollars. This would be three hundred dollars towards that three hundred, a two thousand dollar increase. There's an administrative process that will need to be determined. We need to work through that. How do we, how do we allocate that? There's certain things when it comes to trusts that we'd have to navigate. There's some challenges with that regarding homestead, regarding. So there's some things administratively that we'll need to look at, but we think that if the council was to move forward with this, and we could tee this up for your next, next council meeting on September sixth, we could certainly have the majority of these checks in the property owner's hands well before November first, if that's something that the council would like to move forward with. But I wanted to make sure we brought that forward. As I said, Council Walker, the mayor, and Council Milks had all. And and I know many of you had also talked about what could we do, but we took a blend of those those suggestions and and created this as an option. So as Joe mentioned, he's here to answer some questions. I'll certainly answer what we can and cannot do, but we're, this is a good opportunity for you to talk about that, and if you have questions regarding, even though Karen and Joe have been here, they're first, they first came before you in March to talk about this work that was going to be done, came back before you again, I believe it was in July, and, but, so I know you've heard why they've, why the city assessor took the steps that she did, but we're willing to to answer some more questions because you may have gotten questions from from the public that you need to answer.
How does a homeowner that may or may not be taking advantage of the of the homestead exemption, how would you know whether you're eligible or whether you may already be or may not be taking advantage of it? And then how do they go about regis, applying?
So there's an application that we have available in the office. If you're getting the homestead, you can simply look at your tax bill. It's going to show that you have an exemption. If you have more than one exemption, it may be blended and and kind of show as more than twenty-three thousand two hundred and fifty. But that's your best indicator. You can always call the assessing office, ask us, because we're happy to look it up and and see. You, you have to apply by April first of any given year. However, we do hold applications for someone as eligible, and we keep them in the queue, basically ready to apply for the year that they're first eligible. I'm I'm sorry, what was the rest?
How does somebody know if they're eligible?
It has to be your primary residence, and you have to live there a year when you're eligible. And and you can't have it anywhere else. That's that's another important caveat.
Make sure I'm doing this right. I'm surprised more people aren't taking advantage of the homestead exemption, and I was going to ask the same thing that Councilor Milks just asked. Is the only way for residents to get the form is a physical form in the office? Is there a way for us to possibly increase the accessibility of that with an online form or PDF?
So so it is online, and you can get it at the city of Auburn website. You can also get it at the state of Maine website, Maine Revenue. You can walk in and get a form. Typically, when we have new owners, we will do a new owner mailing, and that will include a homestead exemption, a application. When we go on property inspections, we have them in our car and we're ready to give them to someone who doesn't have them. It's a question we have often asked when we're doing inspection. So we we really try to make a concerted effort to publicize it, but, you know, we have a lot of residents and and not everyone follows the media or or, you know, the world as closely as there as some others, so. But but we, but we do try to make it available as much as possible.
And I'd, I'd say the, of, of, in this whole process, the, the only real complaint, because I think most people realize that they've had appreciation in their, in their property. I'd say the biggest complaint that I've gotten from most people is the lack of notification ahead of time. It surprised a lot of people. So that's the feedback that I give in this process that certainly we could have done a better job, but maybe going forward, that's certainly something that I think we should take a look at because that, a lot of people were surprised, and I think that that's the feedback.
Yeah, councillor, we we've heard that a lot as well. We talked about it in our virtual town hall meeting as well, and and we wish we we had more notification and and could have. But there's a lot that goes into baking the cake, if you will, when it comes to commitment, and some things we don't know right up until, you know, that moment that we commit, and decisions that are made about, you know, ratioing and valuation, and and all those things kind of go into the mix of filling out the tax rate couch sheet. There's a lot of unknowns right up until the moment we press that final button, but you're right. The more notice we can give, the better, and we hope to do that going forward. Hopefully, we're also forestalling any market adjustments for the people who are just affected. That's our, that was one of the, one of the reasons why we thought it was right, the right thing to do, is that, you know, it it saves pain down the road.
Just a couple of comments. First of all, Joe, thank you very much for this. I also want to let everybody know that Joe and Karen, actually, first things first, both live in Auburn, so they are not immune to everything as well. I think that's a really important point. Second, they did a phenomenal WebEx or Zoom kind of presentation on how this happened, what the numbers look like, why, what are we actually forestalling in the future. So instead of a massive jump, because this tax increase or revaluation, excuse me, was based upon two thousand and twenty sales data, correct?
Nineteen and twenty, so the state of the split year.
I think if we all just think about it a little bit, two thousand and twenty-one was probably even a higher escalation in values. So, and even the first part of two thousand and twenty-two, I think it's starting to settle down a little bit right now based upon what I'm seeing. And I don't know if you have anything to add to that, Joe?
Well, I was checking sales this morning, and they're still high, you know, so, but but there are economic indicators that it is flattening. There there is some some indication. I'd like to see inventory catch up a little bit. That's another indication that maybe the prices will stabilize a little bit, but it's really too soon to know for sure.
Okay, so let's, let's, this is really going to have to be a two-part conversation. First of all, do we have any comments or any any ideas surrounding the three hundred dollar relief check? Is there any questions, comments on making it better and so forth?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. What would the the full sum of ARPA funds distributed be?
I think the best, what you'll see on the recommendation would be that we allocate one point five million. I think that will cover any of the applications that we think we're going to receive that are currently not receiving homestead exemption. But it also will cover any administrative costs in this project. When it comes to the property tax stabilization program, you know, the way that the state put that in motion is that all those applications come to the municipality, so that means we need to process those applications, and we've already received three hundred and thirty applications on a workload of staff that, that's something new for their workload. So I'm thinking one point five, council, will be what we, what we move forward with.
And just for clarification, this is a one-time deal, so there would be relief this year, and then by default, people would have an instant three hundred dollar increase next year, void of this offset.
That's correct. Yeah, and I, but I think, you know, and I think the mayor will chime in on this, something, you know, I talked about earlier today. That does give an opportunity for added value that we know we're seeing, projects that we see coming in, to help offset that. Then that also gives you that opportunity through that budget process as well. You now know the mill rate, where it is at, you know what to move forward with, and I'll help make some adjustments on that as well. And then the work that you're doing right now, and mayor, this is probably where you're going to, is regarding that inventory piece that Joe was talking about.
Is there any, any further questions or even ideas on the three hundred dollars? So let's put that one to bed.
Yeah, just a quick question on that. Is there any way we could put a lower limit? So in other words, if somebody had a hundred and ten dollar tax increase, could we just? I mean, I know it gets into the weeds and very cumbersome, but just, you know, to use it for the purpose and.
Yeah, the key on this is that this was COVID relief, and so we're using the allocation for ARPA's COVID relief. Does it have an impact here on an added impact regarding taxes? Yes, but it's not a direct correlation with taxes that they're having experienced an impact on. So keeping that separate, I think, is important. Yeah.
Anything else? Then I'll transition afterwards. I just want to make sure we're good to go, so we got some. So a couple more questions, Joe, that I think this is going to tee this up to the second part. Go for it.
Just to clarify, someone does not have to be getting the homestead exemption now to be eligible. They can, if they haven't applied, they can apply and then be eligible for this.
Yeah.
Joe, real quick, with the increase in valuation or the value adjustment, what was the overall net impact or increase in value for the city of Auburn? I want to say it was like around two hundred and fifty. While you look for that, also, the last comment was, go online, watch Joe and Karen's presentation. It's there on the homepage, like an hour and a half with questions from the audience, remote audience, extremely informative, very, very well done. So it was, it was a nice way, and I heard this from a lot of residents who watch. They were very, very pleased with it.
Well, thanks. I appreciate that. So the 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 net increase of the market adjustments was one hundred and seventy-eight million. We also had new valuation totaling twenty million, so. So the net increase was 199 million, just under 200 million. And again, those new valuations is from the traditional things that are new construction, land changes, reassessments. That's net because we also have losses as well.
So we'll focus in on for the point of this conversation around 178 million dollar gap. So in theory, if we increase value by 178 million dollars, then that would readjust existing homes back to basically the benchmark they were before the readjustment.
Yes.
This is where I'm going with this one. Councillor Moore, kind of hit on the head. We have basically are providing a 12-month relief, basically allowing individuals to start properly planning for that increase in overall valuation and hence the increase in tax even after a decrease in the mill rate. That allows us 12 months to do several things. One is to lobby the state for an increase in reimbursement for homestead exemption. What we're failing to talk about is homestead exemption is not fully reimbursed back to the municipality. The blended rate is around 70%. Correct me if I'm wrong, 70% or 73% blended reimbursement rate on that 25,000.
Blended reimbursement here. The initial 20,000 was at 70%, 100% for the additional 5,000 that was added to the total 25,000 value. So yes, blended, that's where we're at. I think there is conversation, I know Mamunis Association will be advocating for at least moving that to.
And we've done that, well, we've done that every year that I've been on it, always advocating for a higher reimbursement with some success. But what we saw two years ago when the state increased the homestead exemption from 20,000 to 25,000 was a mass increase in the number of residents who actually realized there is a homestead exemption option out there and then hence applied. Two, three years ago, if I remember correctly, Joe, correct me if I'm wrong though. So now with this happening, we'll see another further increase. You couple that with a property tax stabilization program, which has not been fully funded by the state legislature. And I think we're going to blow their expectations on numbers statewide, I believe it's 200,000. I think that's going to go through the roof. That's going to leave another unfunded mandate to the municipalities across the state. And then thirdly, you're looking at, part of that bill is stabilizing or freezing those over 65. And if your numbers are correct, at 2,000 applicants for Auburn, and it kind of sounds right. What that's going to do, it's going to shift any further tax obligation to those under 65, which is going to be problematic. I don't know how, but it's not going to be great. So we have to think about that. And I think what I'm trying to do is lay the, kind of set the stage here, the table, for the fact that we need to, A, increase inventory, as Joe says, so we can make sure that the values don't continue to rise. So we're not left with this situation again next year or the year after. And then B, we need a massive increase in new value in the City of Auburn to the tune of approximately 178 million dollars. Last year, we did really well. We've been on a good trend, 20 million net increase. We've approved this fiscal year, close to 73 million dollars, which is great. But it's not at all going to be finished and built out by April 1st of next year. So we're moving and trending in the right direction. But we'll need to escalate this about threefold, according to my calculations, and really rapidly expand. Hold on for next fiscal year, look at some significant cost savings measures, okay? And continue and wait for all this new valuation to be built and then attaxed appropriately. So that's the overarching thing that I want all the councillors and city staff and people to think about. How do we get there? Joe, do you have something to add? Show your finger on the hot button.
I could say a lot about this stabilization program and the funding of it and the shifting to a younger generation of taxpayer. I know that the state is really talking seriously about amending this program. There are some, there's some interest in repeal and replace with something that may be even better. But I guess I could say a lot about it. And if there's any specific questions, I can weigh into that. And also, we're having a public meeting at the Auburn Senior Center on September 7th. It's in public and we'll be talking about things we've already talked about, the ratios, the rationale for market changes, and also these programs that are available to, as property tax relief.
I guess just to reframe it in very simple terms, there's three options. Taxes continue to increase for people under 65. We go through some austerity or we increase the tax base. Those are the three moves.
Everybody concur with that?
That's exactly the conversation I had with a citizen today is that we could, we have some things that we need to cut if we're going to lower the tax rate. But just to clarify, for anybody that's listening on how you calculate the homestead exemption. So we would have, you would take your 20,000 or what do we, 25,000 times the mill rate, which is?
2275.
2275, I was going to say 229, okay.
And you have to ratio it by the declared certified ratio of the city, so 93%. So it's 23,250 is the base homestead.
Times 22?
Yep, times the mill rate.
Times the mill rate, 22. And then that would be a relief plus the $300.
Correct. However, those who, those who have the homestead have already, that's already baked into their tax.
Right, if you're eligible and you haven't taken advantage of the homestead exemption yet, your relief is going to be 300 plus whatever your homestead exemption, so the.
No, because you won't be eligible for it until, the state's very clear on these guidelines that you have to meet the April 1 deadline. So it won't be able to, yeah, next year, correct.
So it's $528.93. That is a homestead exemption at 25,000. And Joe brings up a good point. One of the reasons the tax adjustment needed to happen was it's not 100% of the 25,000 times the mill rate. It's actually whatever the ratio is. So in this case, multiplied by 0.93, which it would have been 0.8 something. And it would have slipped even further. So there is a lot of, though you might not see it, there is an increase in homestead exemption for individuals too.
I also, yeah, I also don't want people to be confused. Your tax bill is your tax bill. We can't do anything to adjust that. You'll have to come and pay that. And then what the council's talking about here is a relief check that will come later. So I don't want anyone to come in with less than, that's right.
You don't get to deduct it off your tax.
No, that all has to, as Joe said in the very beginning, it's very clear about taxes. It has to be paid.
The homestead exemption is taken off of your tax bill when it's generated by the assessor and sent to you.
That's when it's eligible to you, is when it comes to you and by mail with that adjustment change.
They've done it for you.
They've done it for you.
Councillor Moore?
And I'd just like to reemphasize for anybody that's viewing at home. And Joe alluded to this earlier. It's past April 1st, but if you think that you qualify and haven't, haven't tried to get your homestead exemption, put in the application now and they'll hold it. And then that will be implemented April 1st. So it's never too late to put that application in. And I appreciate the homestead exemption and it gives my tax bill a nice little haircut. And if people aren't taking advantage of that, they just got to go online, get the form and send it in.
I think, Mayor, if I could add one more thing. I think when we could talk about the taxes too, and I know this is a, this is a difficult swing. There's no doubt about that. I think Councillor Whiting had made a good point when he talked about going back to take a look at the last seven years of his tax bill and averaging that out to be 2.2% each year. So when you, so that means this council, previous councillors have done a really good job of keeping taxes low, trying to do our best to hold alignment. When you average that out over the last seven years and it's, and that's including this increase right now with the market rate adjustment, averaging that out, it's 2.2%. Now, that was for Councillor Whiting's taxes and that obviously adjusts for each taxpayer. But I think that demonstrates that the council has been doing a really good job on controlling costs.
I would might say they're not low, but they're stable.
So this really, we have, you know, kept it under inflation for the last five years up until now, okay? And then it was even further. Past councils did it as well. When you're under inflation, that's keeping a little effect over the years, okay? Now it's catch-up time on that. But moving forward, we have a year. Inventory needs to go up. Well, we've probably done a better job as at keeping the budget kind of flat or under inflation versus increasing inventory. And this is nothing new. This should come as no surprise to anyone in government, staff, or that's been watching this. We have an inventory problem. That's what's driving up value and we're, and the roosters are coming home to roost, I think is the old saying right now. I've asked Phil, and I know Glenn's working on it, to make sure we have the secondary dwelling unit or accessory dwelling unit ordinance using ARPA funds to stimulate the backyard ADU, so to speak, secondary dwelling units for us to review hopefully by September. I don't know if we're tracking that.
Go ahead, Glenn.
So after the last meeting, we took the memo and we turned it into a draft proposal. And we talked to Main State Housing a number of times and they liked the idea. So we put in a letter of intent. I was hoping to have an answer back by today, but we don't. But once we get that letter of intent responded to and if they say it's something that they can work with, then we'll do the full-blown application. And basically, if they say yes to the letter of intent, they're saying, please fill in the blanks. And it's just a matter of working out where the money is going to be and how much and all that stuff. But so far, it's all good news.
That's great. Again, that's ideally going to stimulate the construction of anywhere from 15 to 30 new secondary dwelling units within the City of Auburn where infrastructure, i.e. water and sewers, are already co-located. You know, when you're looking at a taxable standpoint or value standpoint, that's several million dollars more of taxes. It may not seem like a lot compared to the 178 deficit we're in. But it also should stimulate the concept and the idea throughout the city without subsidies in order for people to do the same thing. Also, home building, acreage, looking at what we need. Is there, and I don't have all the answers for this. It's a challenge for all of us. But we need to look at where development can happen. That's the most cost-effective for the city. We also need to look at what barriers for development there are that exist. I know one thing, it's not our building permits because I believe it's $25, okay? And if anyone has a hard time with a building permit, I'll give you a $25 check, okay? Go build a house. But there has to be other ways. Anything else, any objections that were here in the community? There's a lot of interest. But I continuously hear from developers and residents alike, there is no land for sale in Auburn. And I keep coming back to that. That has been a theme that came out from the comprehensive plan two years ago and it's been reoccurring since. Other than ADUs, other than simulating more market rate housing construction, opening up more land through zoning reform, encouraging people to take the initiative to fill out a petition, 25 signature petition, to ask the planning board to rezone their land so they can have more density or density period. We're looking for answers. I think that's what we need. If there's anybody with some, you know, quick thoughts or answers on this or, you know, follow-up, now's the time to start sharing it.
I'd qualify that there's no land for sale that people can do anything with. 178 million is $300,000 in single-family home. That's 593 single-family homes would get us 178,000, 178 million in revenue. In value.
Yeah, 593 single-family homes and probably double that in apartments, actually. So you're looking at around 1,150, which is not far off our goal. And I know we're trending there with our permits and everything that Mr. Cousins and Jay Brunchick and Glenn Holmes have done. We are well on our way to start getting there, 505 court and so forth. The average apartment generates around market rate, $2,000 a year in property taxes. Okay, so yeah, ideas to stimulate that, branding, events are happening. I will say I think Auburn has the best reputation in Maine right now for communities that are growing and that are excited and embrace growth. That's huge. It's taken many years to get there and most communities haven't. But if there's any policy or something that's concrete, let's think about it. Let's circulate it and let's carve out some time, next meeting in September, to really hash this out and start looking at different scenarios and different tactics. Fair enough? Any parting thoughts before we move on?
Thanks, Mayor. Now we'll bring Glenn back when we have more information and we'll be ready to have those conversations at the next meeting. So this is great. Remember September 7th, that next public meeting. Also, for anyone that's viewing, please call the assessing department. It's a team of normally three. We, Karen will be back. And so it'll be a team of three that's, they are doing their best at return all those calls. Make sure that they're connecting with the public. They'll do so. The tax office is also a big part of that because as people come in, they have questions. So our tax office met with the assessing office just to get the facts, the information, so they can share some of this information as well. So that way, they're when people are coming in and getting those answers as soon as possible. If it's any more detailed, then they're sending them over to the assessing department. So that's taking place. Next, Mayor, we have Eric to present regarding 180 Station Road.
If we could go to page 15, just have an area map of this parcel. A couple of years ago, we were approached by the Royal River Conservation Trust about their efforts to improve the watershed for the Royal River. They were asking about opportunities in Auburn. We're at the upstream end of that watershed. And this property, a sort of repeat problem junkyard that we had, came to mind. The city has tax-acquired it since. We tax-acquired three parcels from this owner, actually, that had junkyards on each of them. We've cleaned up 145 Eastman Lane. The contractor is actively cleaning up 1865 Hotel Road and really waiting on what budget was left over. We intend to clean up this property next. The usable portion of this property is just the piece towards the bottom right of the highlighted parcel, inside that stream thread. And this property is located at 180 Station Road. Some people may not be familiar with where that is. If you are on Kitty Hawk and headed towards Washington Street and you stop at the, stop the traffic signal and drive straight across, it sort of bears to the right and it's sort of behind the auto auction business on the Washington Street. It's largely floodplain. It's upstream of FEMA's actual mapped flood boundaries. It's a fairly small stream, but it floods regularly and is really surrounded by wetland vegetation, alders, sedges, and floods annually around that stream opening. The site was filled, just that portion closest to Station Road. We've had a history of dumping there. I know the property owner did some of that, but we've had other people dumping there as well. We saw this potential grant opportunity as a way to sort of eliminate an attractive nuisance. This grant would potentially remove the fill that was placed on that site over the years and not provide a nice secluded gravel turnout for people to go to and dump things on. We have talked about any value for reusing that site. It's possible that maybe the rear portion of it could be used with the auto auction site. But the portion along the roadway really has limited capabilities. We do know that there is debris buried in the fill. It looks like part of the stick, the fill. I think this is, this grant application of the property, application is a potential to minimize our exposure for actually removing the soil from the floodplain and restoring the site. Happy to hear any feedback from the council. We're really just looking for any objection to applying for the grant. And then later, if we were successful, then we'd be talking to the council about whether or not we want to own the property long-term after a restoration or if we would rather have a land trust that would maintain it as a conservation space takeover. Happy to answer any questions.
I'm in favor of the grant. This is in Ward 4. I travel this road regularly when I go the back way home. And it is very private and quiet back there, low traffic. So obviously, a good candidate for people to do bad deeds as far as dumping. So whatever the grant process requires, I'm certainly in favor of.
I think we're good. Great job. Just get it cleaned up. And this hole is right on the Royal River, right? Eventually, a couple of miles down the road.
It does eventually, yep. The funding source is permit fees paid by development sites in that same watershed. Tamborance has had to pay into that state funding source and the natural, nature conservancy manages the reimbursement. It's attractive because it's in the same watershed that impacts were paid for.
Next, we have Transportation Safety Initiatives, Jonathan Labonte.
Mayor, members of the council, appreciate the chance to give you an update on some transportation initiatives focused around safety in the community. As I noted in the information sheet, and all of you are familiar, both the 2010 Comprehensive Plan and the 2021 Update, as well as the city's strategic plan, put a high priority on safety within the community for residents, for those traveling through. So those, this is certainly a follow on to that. Also provide some highlights of where some council allocated funding has been leveraged on, on projects. I'll welcome your, your feedback at the end. Just a, just a highlight of, in terms of crash volume, citywide, and I'm sure many of you have heard this as the Police Department or Auburn Fire and Rescue have given their budget presentations on their responses. There is a healthy volume of crashes here in the community and part of that is testament to having, you know, being a, a major commercial center for the state as well as having some major corridors like Washington Street, Center Street that minded have that traverse the community. The 2022 data, that's, that's year to date, is where you see that drop. What, what you'd see if you ran through the data in 2020 across months, while the trends in terms of the, the days of the week or the months of higher crash, the pandemic year really, because of significant reductions in travel volume, the pandemic year is certainly an anomaly. You see that if you run, if you look at traffic counts on major streets throughout the city, 2020 is not really a, it's not a good year to model off of. I, I will reference a number of times what's noted here, the main DOT crash query tool. There's a couple of really great interactive websites the DOT has for folks to be able to pull up, see what kind of crashes are happening where, learn about traffic volumes. When we talk about Washington Street during the workshop, and I've spoken with Liz, we're going to stand up a page on the city's website around some of the safety initiatives and provide direct links to residents. So there'll be more to come, just to give residents more access to information. I'm going to use some acronyms during the presentations tonight, so it's a good chance to provide a definition for those. One is an HCL or a High Crash Location and the other is a Critical Rate Factor or CRF. And these are standard across the country. So federal highway administrations, that's these benchmarks and DOT manages them here in the state through their safety office. A High Crash Location is a location that has had eight or more crashes and a Critical Rate Factor greater than one in a three-year period. So it's like these rolling three-year averages for, for intersections or road segments. A highway location with a CRF greater than one has a frequency of crashes that's greater than the statewide average for similar locations. So in essence, if you got a CRF of one, you have about as many crashes as DOT would expect at a similar intersection everywhere in the state. If you had a CRF of two, you're seeing twice as many crashes as you'd see at a standard intersection of that type. So it's really a way to look at normally, is it, is it more dangerous, are there, are there more crashes and to what degree are there, are there more crashes? So I'm going to highlight two different types of, of safety initiatives that we have underway. Some of them are predominantly pedestrian oriented, others are focused more on, on really highway safety. The first project is one that was really, it was initiated with our engineering staff with support and interest from former councilor's boss in McLeod on the Gammage Ave corridor. Since 2012, between Hampshire and Park Ave, there have been 50 crashes. As the retail area of the city grew, Court Street to Golf Street to Dennison to Turner has become a preferred route for folks that can't access Turner Street via the Union Street bypass. So again, sometimes you squeeze the stress ball in one, in one spot and folks find their, find other ways around. A couple of improvements that have already occurred, Public Works through their new striping contract, if you've driven Gammage Avenue, as I know the city manager does coming in, you need to mind your speed to stay in the travel lane. So they've painted 10-foot strap travel lines. Anyone that traveled that last year curb to curb, it was, it was open country. And certainly if folks, folks will drive to the, to the extent they feel comfortable on, based on a road's design. Striping isn't an end all, but it, but it helps. So the, the stripings there, PD has their black boxes out on that corridor and they've been monitoring speed for us to do some benchmarking against previous speed data they'd collected. But there's also been an identification for a, a location for a crosswalk. And we actually had a neighborhood meeting at the senior center a few weeks back to not only get some feedback around a crosswalk here, but to get a better understanding of where folks are walking from and where they're hoping to walk to. So we've identified at Wilson Street, an opportunity, and there's, there's constraints. Obviously you have to deal with existing drainage, so you need to find a location where you're not going to create an impact on the drainage that's already in place on the street. You want to make sure you've got good sight distances so folks can see vehicles coming and vehicles can see the pedestrians. But there would be, there's a plan to add a crosswalk with curb extensions, you'll have a shorter distance to cross at that location, probably go out to bid sometime next year. This was tied to another project that I'll mention, there was a hope to add it to a contract and as all of you probably have heard, bids are coming in very high compared to budget. So trying to manage resources and think about more creative ways to bring those costs down. There would also be the inclusion of something called an RFB or Rapid Flashing Beacon. That's where you can, similar to what we have on Main Street or on Park Ave approaching the school, you push a button, you get the, the flashing beacon, reminding drivers that there's a pedestrian there to yield. There's been studies done, drivers are four times more likely to yield to a pedestrian if one of those beacons are in place. So it's, they're, they're proven to work. There's obviously a cost, you're now not just moving curbs, you're doing some electrical work. But those are, those are seen as a, as a really strong way to raise awareness for pedestrians.
Can I make a comment? On Main Street in Auburn, we have the blinker for people to be able to cross. And, and why I'm saying that is we, we don't have any bump out there. Why do we feel that we have to have a bump out, which causes a lot more trouble in the winter for our plows and you not even seeing that bump out sometimes and you, you end up going right up? Why, you know, why is it such a big deal to have to have that, other than shortening the distance to cross, which the blinking light stops everybody? So I don't know, I don't know why that's such a big deal.
I, I don't have the numbers, I'll, I'll follow up, but there, there's quite a bit of evidence that shortening that distance and allowing for that pedestrian to see the driver and the driver to see the pedestrian has a significant impact. One of the things that, that we'll look at over the next year and certainly as part of those small area master plans, DOT has rules for how crosswalks can be placed on state roads. If you have a curb extension, you're allowed to have street parking alongside that curb extension. In any place where there's a crosswalk without a curb extension, there can't be on-street parking within 20 to 25 feet of that crosswalk. And if we were to look at locations with high crash volumes in the city, I could probably take a quick look and note that we have, in many cases, we have on-street parking directly in front of a crosswalk, which makes it difficult for drivers trying to enter those streets because they're inching forward with a blocked view. Drivers traveling have a blocked view and pedestrians aren't easily visible because of the parking. So the curb extension is not just helping pedestrians, it's also creating a means for drivers to approach the roadway and be able to look up, up and down a street to try to identify oncoming vehicles.
Yeah, if I could, just in the five years we've been doing this and I've been serving with Councilor Walker, we've gone back and forth on the bump outs. I've heard from a number of people on the bump outs now. With that said, I don't think they're a great idea in Maine in the winter. I also know that we have a significant amount of zoned and ordinance off-street parking for residential units currently here, excuse me, currently in Auburn. The on-street parking is not used to the extent where I think cutting across or getting rid of one or two spaces on either side is going to be detrimental to this area, especially because they're right at an intersection. Obviously on one side of that, you can't have parking anywhere as it's a street. I say that because I'm always afraid that we're letting, you know, good be the victim of, you know, perfection. And if we have an issue, we know a rapid, an RFB, Rapid Flashing Beacon, I'm going to say that a couple of times, and a striped crosswalk are good preventive measures, then why don't we go ahead and do that now? And yes, block off on-street parking to a depth of 25 feet from that crosswalk. A, it's less expensive, but B, it's more, it's quick, it's a quicker solution, especially now. Now, in the future, if things turn out differently with A, the budget and B, how bids are coming in, okay, maybe we do that. Or if we can lobby MDOT for some other alternate to an actual asphaltal fault or concrete bump out, and I've seen this in many other states and cities, orange pylons that are removable in winter, you know, obviously denoting, denoting that this is a crosswalk and it gives more space or shorter crosswalk, I say we look at that. I, Councilor Haas, you live and breathe and bump out land. I mean, you tell us about your experiences.
It's one of my favorite things in the world, I swear, especially plow season, when you just hear them bump off that all night and it's extremely frustrating. My concern here at this particular intersection is that I think on both sides to the left and right of this, there are multi-units there. So if you're taking away parking in that, that small area, you'd be limiting their ability to park. Now, I do know, they park on the side of the street anyways and it's a nightmare just driving through that because it's already so narrow. So I see both sides of, if we put a bump out there, you could potentially see the person, but I mean, cars as it is can't even see each other when they're pulling out and that's why it's so dense and everybody's getting into, into accidents. Right? So.
We're talking here, two cars, one on each side, a 25-foot distance, correct, from the crosswalk? 25 on both sides, so that's two spaces. I would, I would recommend that we forego the asphalt bump out and go right to the stripes and the Rapid Flashing Beacon and no parking within 25 feet of those crosswalks and as an immediate or close to immediate fix. How the council feels about that, if that's even a possibility with MDOT or state law.
I would just add that the Complete Streets Committee would be a good one to run this by. I think the, the bump outs are especially effective when you're dealing with the, this, the most at need pedestrians, you know, seniors that need a little bit more time to cross. You shorten that distance, schoolchildren that maybe aren't paying as much attention, you know, there are uses for it. I think that they can be, I know they're expensive to build and they're a pain for plows, but there is a use for them.
And don't get me wrong, I mean, I'm not saying no, but what I'm saying is we should not be waiting around for the opportune time where we can actually just even get a contractor to build it. I say we go ahead with immediate or intermediary step at a minimum, which is paint and RFB, which will be recycled anyways.
I also have another question. You, you've got four corners and we think we got to have four bump outs. Why can't we just live with one corner having a bump out instead of having one here, one here, one here, one there? That, to me, doesn't make any sense. Doesn't make, well, you're, you're asking questions too along with me, but we'll go down to Roy's on Broad Street. That bump out has caused more trouble just since they put it in. And I had asked a question before they even put that in, why do we really need it in front of Roy's store? His delivery trucks, number one, deliver there all the time. The bump out now has made it, so the delivery truck can't even pull in. So now he blocks half the road. If, if someone parks two spaces forward, you've got to now go forward and back into that space, which is going to cause rear-end collisions on the guy that's trying to back up. And it, right from the beginning, I said, this was not a smart move for the city or anybody else to put that in. They come down, looked at it, oh, well, yeah, yeah, this and that and all the same, same stories we hear every time we need a bump out. So we've got it now and it's causing more troubles. Go down there when it's a heavy rainstorm, where does all the water go? Right down the middle of his sidewalk now, people got to wait to be able to get into a store for the rain to slow down. Otherwise than that, you're taking a shower up to your kneecap. So again, there's places maybe they should be, that street, if you want it there, that's great. But when people ask, we have to have it and there's good reason for not having it, we ought to listen to them people. That store's been there, I think before I was born, and it's never had a bump out and the bump out has caused more trouble than it's worth.
To the next, I, I will, I made, I made some notes and as we look at, Phil's asked later this month, kind of have a, a work plan around a number of these initiatives, I think doing, looking at the cost benefit and, you know, where, where might it make sense, make sense for a curb extension and where might there be some low-cost, quick alternatives? So there are cities that have done it. I was circulating to staff, Haboken, New Jersey, I'm not saying that Auburn's the Haboken of, of Maine, but they aggressively went at, you know, striping the no parking areas and doing the seasonal plastic bollards and they've had a significant reduction in crashes and injuries and crashes, just focusing on low hanging fruit. So Union Street, a couple of years ago, the council funded through CDBG a redesign of a number of crossings of Union Street and then Library Ave, Troy Street, Pleasant Street, a portion of Spring Street. It came back with a very high estimate that there was not funding for. I had a conversation with, with Glenn and with Dan Goyette and Glenn Holmes and Dan Goyette in Engineering and said this council's prioritized pedestrian safety. Can we carve out where we know that there is significant pedestrian movement along Union Street and do that as a standalone project? That did go out to bid. The last 10-year period, there's been four pedestrian crashes on this segment. This would provide for a closer crossing, there's some slight changes in the curb, ADA accessibility at that median, as well as the addition of the Rapid Flashing Beacon and the ability of any pedestrian at that midway point to also signal for crossing from the school street area across to Library Ave and then to the sidewalks along Union Street on that side. That project did go out to bid, it came back about double what was estimated. A big challenge that's been learned is that because of Union Street's traffic volume and traffic management, that drove up the cost of that item. So Engineering's going to look at some potential, maybe to package that project with a couple of other pedestrian improvement projects to go back out at the start of the year. So the goal is to see this done in the next construction season. Quickly highlight, the council allocated funding for enhanced crosswalks along Court Street with a target towards Edward Little. Had some conversations with Scott Aneer, the principal there, as his faculty and staff return, he's going to help me connect with some staff there to connect students to some public process. The hope is to engage both the neighborhood in a public meeting, again, understanding where folks are coming from and where they're trying to walk to, as well as students, where they're coming from and where they're walking to, to identify, you know, opportunities for some improved crossing opportunities. Obviously doing all that under the constraints of the existing road design, drainage, as I mentioned, and knowing that any, any changes have to meet, have to meet ADA requirements. Just kind of quickly orienting, looking at from Minded Avenue to Harris Street, and we've had some conversations with the Superintendent's Office as well, just to better understand for different grade levels, what the walking expectations are as we think about pedestrian improvement and seeking other funds to do that. Middle school students, there's an expectation that if you live within a mile of the school, that you would walk. For the high school, it's a mile and a half. Minded Avenue to Falcon Drive on Court Street is about three quarters of a mile. There are no crosswalks. There's a crosswalk at either end, there's a crosswalk at Falcon, there's a crosswalk at Minded Avenue, nothing in between and a 35 mile an hour speed limit on that section. Again, the distances from Falcon Drive where there is a crosswalk to EL is a mile. There is a crosswalk at Park Ave, which There is a crosswalk at Park Ave., which is three-tenths of a mile, and another that was constructed recently through Engineering is four-tenths of a mile from Park Ave. That's a 25 mile-an-hour speed limit area. So there certainly is a lot of pedestrian activity there. You've got multifamilies, you've got folks in the neighborhood perhaps walking to stores. There, there are not a lot of locations with significant crashes there, but there are some, and anyone who's traveled that corridor, and it's been studied several times, from Harris Street to the approach down the hill is, I'd call it a very dangerous corner. There's very limited sightline as traffic comes around that corner for pedestrians. One of the reasons Harris was improved the way it was, was to try to draw pedestrians to Harris, or they could be seen by vehicles and they could see vehicles versus Fairmont or Forest, which are really difficult to be able to see. So we'll have some engagement this fall with, with the community, get students involved. There's some good GIS tools we can use to have them pin their locations and be able to get some feedback from there.
And if I could add, in my capacity on the school board, we just had a meeting, actually, to talk about school bus. We had a lot of uproar last year. They're good. Now the city has management of the transportation system, they're doing a great job. Knock on wood, all of our bus positions are going to be filled, and we'll have a little bit of leeway or an extra buffer, which is great. But one thing is, we do have to encourage kids to use the bus and/or walk to school, to limit the amount of cars that are coming in at all our schools. It is a pretty significant and preventable issue, and I can understand with parents hesitation about the efficacy of our school bus routes right now. I get that after last year, but I do want, if they're listening right now, and all of us to urge our constituents to have their kids, you know, walk or take the bus. Very, very important for safety reasons.
I'm going to highlight a couple of projects on Turner Street. One is the segment downtown here, the southern end of Turner Street between Court Street and Hampshire and Great Falls Plaza. It's been evaluated a number of times tied to previous Court Street studies. There have been six pedestrian crashes since 2012, which for DOT, that's, that's a high number of pedestrian-involved crashes over, over that period. We did bring some concepts to DOT. They were able to identify funding under their current work plan. Usually, you're planning the years ahead. They've awarded us a grant of $215,000, which will be matched with the downtown walkability funds that are part of the CIP for the Planning and Permitting Department. We're awaiting the contractual agreement from DOT before we can get into the final design. So I'm just showing you an aerial there, not, not the full design, but it will, it will include a reduction in a travel lane along Turner Street. The traffic volumes don't warrant two travel lanes when you make the right from Court Street, so there'll be one lane and then on-street parking, so we'll add some additional parking to the downtown district. That on its own for crosswalks is going to shorten the travel distance, and we'll carry that all the way through the Great Falls Plaza intersection. So anyone crossing from Great Falls Plaza Parking, looking to get to the Y, to the courthouse, there'll be significant improvements in their ability to cross at that intersection and feel safe, which is certainly the challenge right now. You don't have the PED countdown, there'll be a full upgrade in the ADA facilities at that intersection as well. And there's a separate project ongoing through Engineering to bring the fiber-optic connection with our traffic signals down Center Street and to connect that intersection as well. So from a signal management perspective, we'll have a better, better control to give pedestrians preference in those areas during key times of the day. In terms of winter maintenance, I would defer to PW, and I can certainly follow up on, on their, their treatment plans. I know, you know, overall, Court Street's been looked at as a challenge for pedestrian access, in particular for folks who have mobility challenges, you know, having time to cross, in particular with challenges post-snowstorms. Well, we can certainly follow up with.
No, I'm concerned with more and more people getting those electric wheelchairs, which is a great thing because it increases people's mobility to get out and enjoy life like other citizens. So I'm just concerned about making sure curb cuts and islands are shoveled enough so that people can walk across them without landing. This is dangerous out there, even though Public Works really tries hard to keep up with it, but you kind of can't always.
One other Turner Street improvement in, in the planning stages, Turner at Dennison Street, highlighted that earlier. In, in doing some research around this, talking with folks at the PAL Center, it's in folks at PW, folks that work with our crossing guards, this is, this is a spot even crossing guards often don't feel safe trying to help students cross. It's a corridor that connects to PAL, Senior Center, to Washburn. We've had conversations with DOT and their safety office. We were strongly encouraged to put together a grant application on fairly short notice. We've asked DOT for $482,000 to make an improvement to that intersection. We're targeting a couple of things, improving site distance as, as vehicles approach that intersection. As traffic volumes have grown on Dennison, it certainly created a challenge. I mentioned the on-street parking, that, that's been a significant contributor. Travel speeds, vehicles that are, because there really isn't, there's not, there's not a stop once you get through the Union Street intersection, and if you're coming from the north, you've just left a 35 mile-an-hour zone. It's a fairly open road, just been, they've just done a repaving project there. So doing, looking at treatments that can help slow traffic and force traffic approaching that intersection to slow down, as well as the addition of the rapid flashing beacon. If anyone's traveled that section and noticed, or perhaps next time you do try to notice, on the west side of Turner Street on Dennison, there is only a sidewalk on one side. But at Turner, there's a crosswalk on, on both sides. We would eliminate the southern crosswalk that doesn't actually connect to a crosswalk on Dennison, because people are crossing, and then you can see the, what they call a goat path, you can see that folks are walking there. We really want to prioritize the one crossing of Turner Street at Dennison and make that as safe as possible, and it will eliminate that other crosswalk and drive everyone to the one improved crossing at Turner Street. So we're, we're hoping to hear about this grant by the end of this year, if we could design it next year and have it constructed in '24. Going to highlight some, some highway safety projects. We had a really good meeting with DOT's highway, their, their safety crew. They'd worked with AVCOG to do some traffic counts as part of identifying improvements to some high-crash locations throughout the city, or high-crash road segments. This one, Poland and Rodman Road, I'm sure many of you have traveled it. It's been a high-crash location for 12 straight years. 89% of the crashes are tied to what they call an intersection movement. So if you are, Poland Road has the preferred movement. You come off of Hotel Road, you're on Poland, you don't have a stop until you reach Minut Avenue. If you're on Rodman Road, you've stopped at Manly, you then approach. Often, there's driver confusion whether or not Poland Road has to stop. What you, what you're seeing on the screen there is PM, peak hour traffic. Now, Poland Road historically was a commuter route into town. What you're finding is growth happens in the western part of the city and to the west. More traffic is trying to use Rodman to get to Washington Street, to get to the Turnpike. So you actually see more vehicles during the peak hour on Rodman trying to get to Washington than on Poland. So this is going to move to a four-way stop. The city, at the staff level, was very supportive of that. In fact, we told DOT if they could work with us with materials and otherwise, Public Works would be able to assist in the implementation rather than waiting for this to be funded in their 25 or 26 work plans. So DOT's offered to develop the stencils that would go in road, to fabricate the signage that would be installed, and that PW could then deploy their teams to do this, do this work. So rather than wait three years for implementation, we could, we could move quickly, probably next spring, to implement this improvement. Another high-crash area, Minut Avenue. Again, this has been studied a number of times. 2012 was the most recent. In the last 10 years, there have been 264 crashes, 34% resulting in injuries or fatalities. It's a corridor, in all the previous studies, it noted issues with site distance, issues with access management, so that's, those are the curb openings at businesses are really inconsistent along that route. And there are residential neighborhoods, Heath Lane, Garfield, Amherst, and often folks are trying to access businesses across the street, be it Blackies, Mac Seafood, or otherwise, and there's really no means to do that. DOT has proposed that they, they would be open to extending a paving, a paving project on outer Minut Avenue into Minut, into Hotel Road in a future year if the city were open to what they call a road diet, which is a conversion of that road from a four-lane highway to a three-lane highway. So there'd be a travel lane in each direction and a center turn lane, and that would create opportunities for us to make some improvement within that right-of-way, perhaps to add additional sidewalks, widen sidewalks to make it safer, but obviously giving people a safe place to make a left turn or to pull into traffic before they look to make another movement. So the, the goal there would, would probably be to see that happen in 2025.
Do it, and do it sooner if you can. It was part of the comp plan, and, and I wouldn't be surprised if you could get some support from all of the businesses along that street.
It's probably one of the highest speeding zones in the city, I would guess.
Yeah, DOT's measure is usually 15,000 to 17,000 vehicles a day. Anything there and below, they're comfortable reducing travel lanes from four to what they call three. And so there's a number of places, this being one of them, that are a really good candidate for that.
And I will, I will say this, this is, it seems to happen, and I think it's going to happen too, on some of these other proposals, especially the Rodman-Poland Road and this, or Minut Avenue, excuse me, you get displacement. So what we've seen is an ever-increasing number of cars going down Young's Corner Road, West Auburn, North Auburn Road, cutting through Center Street. And if we're looking at this, people will spread out, okay? They'll go to find different routes. Can we also take another look at some of those intersections, i.e. Perkins Ridge and Young's Corner comes to mind? West Auburn-North Auburn intersections, slowing that down, because they are not, they should not be used as primary cut-throughs? And they are. I mean, we've seen Young's Corner Road, traffic increased to almost 6,000 cars a day on a road that is not designed for that. I know, West Auburn-North Auburn Roads around Lake Auburn, up Beable and so forth is a cut-through from Turner, it's just, it's a speedway. So I just think more people are going to start using those side or tertiary roads if we make some of these smart decisions on the main ones.
And I did make note of that. So DOT has expressed to us that if we want to be able to measure some before and after impacts, they would work with us on some modeling, and AVCOG has traffic counting and Turner, turn counting radar that they can deploy. So we're, we're going to make some evaluations as part of these, so we can understand, again, that squeezing of the stress ball, you know, their alternative routes, that cars are going to go ultimately where they see the shortest drive, it's just making sure that we build roads that have them drive safely while they're making those choices. Two last quick, quick sections to share. They're actually some of our, our highest crashed and most dangerous. Center Street has been studied before, most recently in 2009. There were, just in the last, so you're, you're seeing a map that's showing the Veterans Bridge over Boxer Island, the Main Street, Russell Street corridor in Lewiston, and towards Minut Avenue in Turner and then Center Street. So just the section in Auburn in the last three years, so 2020, to this point in 2022, there's been over 200 crashes on this section. Very dangerous. The 2009 Center Street plan is dated now in terms of the suggestions it had made. They really weren't moved, there wasn't support of the property owners in particular, or the Chamber of Commerce at that time. There is, within the federal bipartisan infrastructure law, there's a number of new competitive programs to go and get funding that wouldn't be part of regular formula funds that would come from the state or through AVCOG. One of them is called SS4A, Safe Streets and Roads for All. It's a two-part program. You can apply for an action plan, which allows you to develop strategies to improve safety, and once you have the action plan, you can apply for implementation. So it's almost assumed if you get the action grant, that you can then line up implementation funding. So this is an opportunity for us to partner with AVCOG as the lead. They've said they're willing to develop the application. We would agree to participate actively in that process, and it would create literally an action step, a punch list of how to get at reducing crashes and providing better access, in particular for pedestrians. I know as the zoning changes are advanced, the opportunities for significant additional residential around this, this commercial district is becoming attractive to developers, but we want to make sure that folks don't have to drive to every destination if we can make it safe for them to walk. So one actionable item that I've spoken with the city manager about is to be able to have a resolution by the council in support of the broad objectives around the Safe Streets and Roads for All. It doesn't commit to implementation at this point. It really just states that the city council and the city of Auburn is supportive of, of actions to improve safety for all users on our highway system. So that would be the, the one action item I would look for on that.
Jonathan, I, I just wonder if, if maybe now is a, is a great time to start taking a look at Center Street. With, with Target opening up and that, right next to that big crash location that you just showed us, I think it's only going to get worse.
Yeah, and the planning and permitting staff, you know, the convenient MD proposal and the, and the Shaw's Plaza, the folks at Albertson's there selling that lot. Planning staff have been really responsive, as has the planning board, to be mindful as projects come. How do we tighten up access management? How do we provide more pedestrian access? But being able to be more proactive with landowners before projects come to make improvements is going to be important.
And I'd, I'd say vehicle flow in that area is, you've got coming across the river, you've got all those, there's like five lights there, people get, I think that's part of the problem, and we got to evaluate the vehicle flow through there.
If I can make a suggestion, I believe this is your last slide before we go to the presentation. Do you want to hold this and then summarize it during your presentation? Should be probably about 7:07, about eight minutes. Give us a little bit of a break before we go. Would that be okay with you? We can also, Mr. Labonte's up during the presentation, actually, first one. So we'll go, make some time for questions if he's back in just a couple of minutes. Fair enough? Okay, we're out of workshop. Four minutes, council chambers. I'd like to call the order of this meeting for August 15th, 2022. Please join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, united, indivisible, infinite and endless.
Okay, before we get going, just a couple of notices. Just brought to my attention that there's a notice that went out for a potential zone change in New Auburn, north of Eighth Street. That notice is an error. That will not be on the city council agenda until probably November, maybe December for the New Auburn area, and as well as additional areas. Of course, if you're here for that, great, you can always speak about that during public comment, but it'll not be an agenda item tonight. Moving on, consent items, we have none. Next on the agenda are minutes of the August 1st, 2022, regular city council meeting. Are there any corrections?
Motion to approve, second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Pass at seven zero. Now we're going to move on to communications presentations and recognition. We're going to turn this over to Jonathan Labonte, who's going to tee up the last slide from his previous workshop presentation, as well as go into some action items. Mr. Labonte?
This one, it doesn't look like I have to push a button, so save me one thing for getting. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, appreciated your time during workshop to highlight a number of the proposed safety, transportation safety initiatives in the city. The most significant of those, the city manager asked that I shared during presentations. So members of the public may be also, maybe, maybe aware as we begin this, this effort. This was a slide that I shared with all of you that I'll share more broadly. Looking at crashes throughout the city over the last 10-year period. The 2022 numbers, which look low, again, those are year-to-date crash numbers. I pointed out the anomaly of 2020, the pandemic year, and reduction in crashes there, really driven by our reduction in, in travel throughout our community and communities across the country. That, that trend held elsewhere as well. Some definitions, some terms that I'll use during this presentation. One is an HCL, an acronym for High Crash Location, and Critical Rate Factor, CRF. A high crash location is a location that has had eight or more traffic crashes and a critical rate factor greater than one in a three-year period. This isn't an Auburn or a State of Maine measure. This is a, a measure that's used consistently in highway management across the country. A highway location with a CRF greater than one has a frequency of crashes that is greater than the statewide average for similar locations. So for example, if an intersection had a CRF of one, it would have about as many crashes as you would predict at comparable intersections across the state. If it had a CRF of two, you're seeing twice as many crashes as you would have predicted at a similar intersection across the state. So the particular intersection that I, I want to share with you tonight, an opportunity to advance some more immediate safety improvements, is the intersection of Washington Street and Beach Hill and Danville Corner roads. This intersection has consistently been a high crash location for over two decades. The most recent full three-year period where we gathered data from the Maine Department of Transportation, there were 20 crashes at this intersection for a CRF of nearly three. So we're seeing nearly three times more crashes in this intersection than you would typically see at this type of intersection across the state. There are, there are lots of things I'm sure the city welcomes being ranked among the top or at the top of the state. Crash rankings for intersection are certainly not where you want to be. This intersection has the most excess crashes among intersections, so they predict how many crashes it may have. This led the state in intersections where the speed is 50 miles per hour or higher approaching the intersection. There were 14 angle injury crashes. So obviously folks that are crossing from Danville Corner or Beach Hill or in those turning lanes, those crashes are happening at an angle. There have been more of those crashes since 2017 than any of the similar intersections where speed is 50 miles per hour or greater. Right now DOT, as I highlighted in some of the other sections during the workshop, DOT is looking to budget for their 2025 and 2026 work plan, engineering evaluations for safety improvements here. And then capital, any kind of capital improvement would follow. The challenge with that is, this is now clearly known, and it has been for a long period for residents and travelers, known to be a very dangerous location. I've spoken with residents in these areas who have children learning to drive, and these, this is an intersection that is a no-go. You find another route to get to your destination than to cross here. We have approached DOT and suggested we'd like to make an imminent improvement to avoid the opportunity for crashes here while we do that evaluation. And that's what we're going to discuss briefly tonight is doing a demonstration improvement at this intersection. Won't read through that, but it gives you a kind of that, that rolling three-year average of crashes. And as you can see, this consistently two to three times, the number of crashes you would typically see at an intersection like this occurring here at Washington Street and Beach Hill and Danville Corner. Beyond the sheer number of crashes is what's happening with injuries. During this time, 52% of all crashes have involved personal injury. In many cases, severe, severe injury. Often folks may ask, well, was it, was it raining? Was it overcast? Was it snowing? Was there ice? 71% of the crashes have occurred under, under dry conditions at this intersection. This data, I'm referencing the DOT Safety Office evaluation. They did a fairly robust review of this and other intersections. As we work with the communication staff, and as I mentioned to the council, we, we will stand up a page on the city's website for information about our safety projects, in particular the proposed project for Washington Street, to give residents easy access to all of this data as well. There, it may be valuable when we think about doing something as significant as, as we're going to propose, which is to close the crossing of Beach Hill as well as East Hardscrabble, which will certainly have an impact with some folks' regular travel patterns, you know, why such a move there? And perhaps not at another location that has a higher volume of crashes. So I wanted to give a quick comparison of Washington at Beach Hill and Danville Corner to Mount Auburn Avenue at Turner Street. And I want to thank Chief Moen, as we were doing some of this planning around Washington Street, having internal conversations. You know, he, he raised this as an important way to look at, look at, look at intersections and, and the variation in crash types. So in the last 10 years, there have been 52 crashes at this Beach Hill, Danville Corner intersection, three times as many at the Mount Auburn and Turner Street, so 151 crashes. But it's the numbers below that are, that are really most jarring. 52% of the crashes, as I mentioned, at Beach Hill and Danville Corner involve injury. 25%, so half of that number at Mount Auburn and Turner. When you look further into the injury data, where we have moderate or severe injuries to individuals in those crashes, one in three crashes at Beach Hill and Danville Corner involves moderate to severe injury to either the driver or a passenger in those vehicles. Only 3% at Mount Auburn and Turner. That's not to downplay anyone who's been in an accident there or in a crash or been injured. But in many cases, those vehicles are starting from a stop and are at lower speeds than what we're seeing on Washington Street with a 50 mile an hour speed limit. So as I mentioned, DOT is planning out several work plan years before there would be budgeted funds to engineer improvements. What staff are suggesting is that the current risk there warrants an immediate action to protect public safety and risk to life. DOT has a program where they allow demonstration projects. That has historically been for pedestrian or bicycle safety projects. When we raised concern around waiting three years before any action to improve safety and that we'd like to take immediate action, DOT, up to the commissioner's level, is supportive of the city of Auburn applying for a demonstration highway safety project. And this would be the first time that DOT has reviewed and supported this type of, this type of effort. But they also recognize the risk every day that folks take crossing this intersection. To manage diversion and a shifting of that turning traffic, we are going to pursue evaluating a closure of that, those left turns, both from East Hardscrabble and Beach Hill and Danville Corner. We've started an internal work group to plan a number of, of pieces of this. So this isn't sort of fully baked and ready to roll out next week. There's significant public process and internal process and partner process, and I wanted to highlight that for the, for, for the mayor and council. We are looking at neighborhood meetings this fall and doing targeted mailings to folks that live along these corridors that would see a, a change in travel patterns and engage with them around that, as well as a virtual meeting for those who may not be able to access an in-person. Engaging with businesses and stakeholders on the corridor that may see change in travel patterns for how their customers or vendors may be traveling to reach them. Again, the importance of some change in travel pattern to focus on the public safety component, as well as obviously engagement with social media. A number of moving parts to planning and implementation. Closing these openings on a, on a highway that functions like an interstate is not as simple as putting up safety barrels and, and closing access. DOT is looking for our engineering team to develop sketch drawings for them to review. That would include things like jersey barriers and safety barrels. Access to materials could be a limiting factor in terms of the timing of when we would pursue this. Obviously, there's, there is a shortage of materials the city does not keep on hand readily, probably the volume of jersey barriers. So we've started talking with both the Turnpike and DOT about short-term partnerships for such a demonstration project, as well as starting outreach to contractors to see if they may be able to work with us to make materials available. Talking within our planning, GIS and Public Works departments to not only assess detour routes, but to look at signage plans and recognizing that many folks aren't just taking their, their Gazette here to find directions, recognizing that routing services like Waze, Google Maps, and our E911 system, lining up the process we would need to go through to show that these road connections no longer exist, at least for the period of the demonstration project. So someone wouldn't be traveling to Martindale, for example, on the interstate, exiting at exit 75, assuming that they could make that left turn onto Beach Hill. We would want to make sure that those routing services know that to reach that destination, they would need to take three rights instead of the two lefts to reach their destination. And of course, public outreach and awareness will be a critical, a critical component to that. Evaluation is also going to be important during, during a period of any demonstration project. Obviously, we want to benchmark the crash data that exists at Beach Hill and Danville Corner, as well as around East Hardscrabble. But we recognize that any traffic that would have made those turns is going to be looking for other routes to make those. We, we want to highlight those preferred alternative routes, but folks are going to make their own decisions. We, we want to identify some of those likely detour routes and benchmark travel volumes, turning data at those intersections, as well as crash data. So we can have a benchmark of if we move traffic to other areas, are we creating safety challenges, increased crashes, or shifting volumes elsewhere? So we want to be fully transparent as we look at the impact of, of closing those openings. We've got partners, AvCog actually has traffic counting and turn count equipment that they can deploy. DOT also has a mobility division. They're actually running an analysis right now of vehicles that enter and leave the Washington Street corridor via these two intersections to get a better sense of their origins, where they're coming from, and their destinations where they're ultimately looking to go. For example, a vehicle that's entering Washington Street at Danville Corner, they didn't originate at that intersection. They They came from a home, from a business, from visiting friends or family, and they approached that intersection trying to get somewhere else. We want to better understand what, what the impact might be to their, their mobility over time. So that's, that's where we are right now. We're building timelines around that. Certainly, the engineering piece and securing the materials will be a time-limiting factor of whether this could happen before the end of this year or spring, but we are advancing the planning with, with timing to engage with a public process with the neighborhood and the general public by fall. And with that, I'll, I'll stop the presentation and happy to answer any questions, or Phil can certainly chime in with any other management feedback.
Counsel?
Thank you for that presentation, Mr. Labonte. This intersection, one side of the road is in my ward, Ward Four, and across the street is Councilor Walker's Ward, Ward Five. I live in very close proximity to this intersection. It's incredibly dangerous. The basics of crossing the intersection and who has the right of way oftentimes can be confusing. There's many mornings where I drive down there and there's just debris in the road. It just breaks my heart because, you know, your statistics are pretty riveting here that people are getting injured. Obviously, with the proposal you have here, I'm trying to get over to Hotel Road. So, love it or not, I, most mornings, I play Frogger, and I'm very patient, and I've learned to be. And that intersection really scares me in the winter after dark because the depth of how fast cars are moving is really hard to ascertain. My only concern with this, because it's also in my ward, and knowing my own behavior and using my, my personal experiences as an anecdote here, Kitty Hawk onto Station Road, which was, we were discussing earlier in the workshop, there's train tracks there with simply a sign that says, "Stop and look both ways." The law of unintended consequences concerns me with the amount of traffic that's going to be going through Danville Junction. It's not a good intersection. As you get onto Old Danville Road, it's a little confusing, and it's a very tight neighborhood down there, and I'm sure you're very familiar with the, it's a village. So, Old Danville Road is, is in good condition and can handle more traffic, but that transition from Washington Avenue onto Station Road across those train tracks, which are, I don't think there's a lot of train traffic through there, but it's not safe. There's no stoplights or anything like that. And then how that impacts the residents of Danville, because there is, without a doubt, certainly going to be a higher level of traffic through there. And then the alternative road, route for myself would be coming down Danville Corner Road, turning right onto Old Danville Road, and then making my way over to Hackett, and then taking a right, and Hackett's a little better of a design because there's not a street on the opposite side of Washington Avenue. It's just very difficult to, to go east to west across Auburn. As a crow flies, I'm probably just a couple miles from work, but that will definitely extend my commute, but something I'm certainly willing to do because the statistics speak for themselves. If I had a magic wand, I would wave it, and there would be an overpass, taking from Danville Corner Road directly onto Beach Hill Road. But then you get into the situation where the flow of traffic's almost too easy, and that's going to impact residential neighborhood on, on Beach Hill Road. So I don't know what the answer is. This will definitely impact and lengthen commutes, and I suspect a lot of people that are entering in from Durham or Pownell will start to avoid Danville Corner Road and start taking alternate paths and possibly make their way down South Main Street and find alternate routes. So something that absolutely needs to be resolved, but definitely needs a lot of analysis because people and cars are like water, and they're going to follow the path of least resistance. We need to figure out where those routes are and what the unintended consequences of sending more traffic through some very tight residential areas would be to those residents.
Any other comment or questions? Counselor Staples?
Yeah, so I live in New Auburn, and I often take that Danville Corner to Beach Hill Road, driving across Washington Street. I think I would most likely be taking Hackett Road if I were to not do this, but one thing that I would throw out there is that it would be good to have some improved signage to show where the, where you could turn around in Washington Street. So if you were to go down Danville Corner and you wanted to get to Beach Hill, where can I make that U-turn to get back facing south on Washington? Same thing going the other way. But I, I think this makes sense. I mean, it's, it's never, never anybody's desire to close off an intersection and to, limit access, but I think in this case, this is a special intersection where there's just a lot of bad stuff that happens. So I think it makes sense, but you know, it's, you just have to be careful how you do it.
If I could, if I could, one second. I lived on Beach Hill Road for approximately five years, and this topic has come up. It came up actually right after I left the street. So as we're talking about traffic affecting neighborhoods, let's also remember the traffic that's currently affecting Beach Hill Road neighborhood too. High density of homes compared to a lot of the other areas of Auburn. My children could not ride their bike on that road. That road was not designed to funnel that many people out as a cut-through. It's a residential road only with limited access with Martindale, let's say, as your commercial entity. This is going to be a pretty significant change for the residents of Beach Hill, Fairway, Parfor, Hickory, and Jennifer, and I think they're going to appreciate that, and that's dozens and dozens of people. This was actually brought forth, I was like five years ago, I think. Do you know why it stopped? Do you remember that? You weren't obviously in this position, this was before my time as mayor, but this was proposed. I believe we might know who the previous mayor was, but why did this not go to execution?
It was floated as a concept at the staff level, and it sort of, I think it stayed, it stayed there. I think the question at the time, and I think DOT has said if Auburn is truly committed, will kind of join you in that, is that there really wasn't a, there's a concept, who's going to own implementing, managing the full implementation? And as you've, as you've heard tonight, and as I think you, from the counselor comments and from my presentation, this is going to be a multi-disciplinary, multi-department exercise, and I'm fortunate to be in this role and be able to help facilitate, but that, that would have been, that would have been a heavy lift on its own, being able to manage both the process, the evaluation components. And we're in a unique situation where DOT is saying, you know, you've, you've risen to the top of a list that you probably don't want to be on here. It wasn't fifteen, I believe it was, because there was a spike in crashes there, and after a couple of fairly serious crashes in fifteen, I think the neighborhood had approached the city to look at alternatives.
Greg, Counselor Moore?
Yeah, I just want to expound upon Counselor Staples's comments real quick. We're going to be looking at an incredible increase in traffic on Miami Avenue as cars try to change from northbound to southbound. If you miss Miami Avenue, there is that turnaround right before the north and southbound lanes kind of merge. I know it's there. It sneaks up on me every time. It's dangerous. It needs to be more visible and better signage because there is a turnaround right there, but everybody blows by it, and there's, to the point where there's actually a second turnaround.
Yeah. We actually had a call with DOT about Washington Street this morning. They have what they call a Mill and Fill project that they're planning to go out to bid probably this winter, spring of next year. They are open for feedback from the city on improved both striping and signage. It will be from about Chassis Street. So if you're at Hackett and you're going to take a right northbound or reverse direction, you actually have four options before the rotary. You've got Chassis, then Fillamar, then Miami, and then the one right after, right after the last trucking company before Connectivity Point. So signage is important along that corridor. Signage will be essential to the detour routes, helping people clearly understand reverse direction opportunities, and that's certainly an important, will be an important part of the public engagement process, is getting folks' feedback on, on strategies to do that and being able to benchmark places like Station Road, being able to monitor traffic counts so we're clearly aware of where folks are choosing to detour.
Well, I personally really appreciate the work you're putting into this. I know you know these streets as well as anybody and what the secondary effects of all these actions are going to be, so thank you for your time and attention.
Yeah, we look forward to being updated on this. Thank you very much, Mr. Labonte. Next on the agenda is an update. Lake Auburn Watershed Report, I'm sorry, I'm going to, Mr. Labonte, real quick. Action item timeframe? What are we looking at here for further action on our end, if any, or an update from M.Dot?
There will be an application process to DOT. We wanted to better understand the timeline for material access and be able to have the first round of public engagement and input as part of putting that application in. So I would expect if the council would like a briefing by memo, we could probably do that probably by the end of September, early October.
In your mind, and through previous talks with M.Dot, what are you looking at for full implementation of this, considering there's no, you know, speed bump, so to speak? Ideally?
Ideally, my hope was to have this done and in place before we get to winter. Material access is something we're investigating in real time. I should, we should have a better sense of that within the next week or so. If materials become a little more complicated, where we need to engage the contractor community to see if we can secure access, then it may be spring, but we should know that within the next week or two.
So potentially, we're just talking months, not years?
Oh, correct. Yeah, the, the, the drive is not waiting until DOT's budgeted their engineering funds three years out. We don't, we don't want to wait that long, knowing the severity of any crash that occurs there.
Very good. Thank you very much for that follow-up. Next on the list, we have Mr. Cousins and a Lake Auburn Watershed Report on subsurface wastewater.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Just a little bit of an introduction. We have Laura Deemer here from FB Environmental coming in via Zoom. The council, after receiving the 2021 analysis of the Lake Auburn watershed, has started to implement elements of the recommendations of that report. As you recall, we've implemented an update to our phosphorus control ordinance, including low-impact development techniques. The council added a trigger for when that applies, reducing that from five hundred and seventy-five square feet of new building area to two hundred square feet, probably the most stringent in the state. It starts very small with very small improvements, but I think it's, it's warranted in the Lake Auburn watershed. You and the planning board and staff at some community conversations meetings spent a significant amount of time talking about subsurface wastewater disposal and the science behind that, the shortcomings of our current ordinances and concerns about changing our current ordinances. The most significant one, of course, being that the subsurface wastewater standards have been used to control density in a way that is not directly connected to science, but used in a way to, to limit density. So as we talked about that, we looked for ways to ensure that if we were to modernize the subsurface wastewater ordinance and use best practices, current science, how do we make sure that we also follow the recommendation of not increasing the allowed density in the Lake Auburn watershed? We looked at a few different options. The simplest and we thought most effective choice was to look at changing all of the residential zones in the watershed where we currently allow a one acre per lot size, changing that to match the low-density country residential zone that we currently also have in the watershed in some areas, to increase that minimum lot size to decrease the density that's allowed to one unit per three acres. Both planning board and council asked for an opinion on that, to have that input into the model that you had created with the Lake Auburn report, and Laura's here tonight to summarize the results of, of that model. So thank you, and Laura, if you could.
Yeah. Thank you, Eric, and thank you for the opportunity to present tonight on the results of the, the new model run we completed for the City of Auburn, as Eric just went over. So the new model run incorporates those proposed ordinance changes that are affecting the land use and development within the watershed. And as Eric introduced already, my name is Laura Deemer, and I am a project manager at FB Environmental Associates. I was on the team last year that completed the comprehensive study that Eric mentioned. So that was reviewing the regulatory, environmental, and economic considerations for protecting the Auburn water supply, and that also includes our partners, Horsey-Witten Group and the University of Maine. So the work that I am about to present tonight builds on that baseline model that was set up as part of that comprehensive study. So just a, a quick summary of, of the objective that the city gave to us. We were evaluating the effect that the proposed ordinance changes would have on land use and development in the Lake Auburn watershed and, and what those associated impacts to lake water quality would be. So Eric, Eric Gardi gave a quick summary of the proposed ordinance changes, but I will just highlight them again here. So specifically, the Lake Auburn watershed district overlay. I guess Eric didn't mention this one, but it's, you know, fairly minor compared to the, the other two changes he summarized, but until agricultural buffer strips were increased from currently fifty feet to now a hundred feet from water bodies, and that was incorporated into the model. But the big one, like I said, and Eric just reviewed, was changes in acceptable septic system siting condition. So that was expanded from a requirement of thirty-six inches to now twelve inches of vertical separation to a limiting factor. So this essentially allows mounded systems to be more consistent with state rules, as Eric said. It also changed the way that we're classifying the types of soils that a septic system could be sited within. Again, this was to better reflect state rules, particularly the chapter, the chapter two hundred and forty-one, Table 4D rules. You know, it, it expanded from three hundred to now four hundred feet. The, this last one was a little tricky to model because changing this language within the ordinance to match state rules, it was more of a change in approach, not necessarily an intentional change to expand or restrict septic siting conditions, because the, the intent is to stay away from citing septic systems on sandy soils that would rapidly infiltrate any effluent within a leach field to surface waters. It's, it's very difficult to classify what the state is calling soil profiles five, six, and eleven based on the mapped soil series that are applicable at the county level. So essentially, there's, there's really no way to confirm with the information that we, we, you know, have at the watershed scale. It's really more of a site-by-site field confirmation that would be needed. So we had to take a fairly conservative approach and essentially identified all soil series that could possibly contain those profiles five, six, and eleven. So because we took that approach, it excludes more land from development than might actually be excluded if you were actually to go in the field and confirm what soil types were So we, we estimated that we're probably underestimating about twenty-three potential new buildings using this approach when we compare to the, the original model approach. So just, you know, keeping that in mind when we review the final results. And just to kind of highlight that a little bit more, here's a map to show you how the approach was applied in the model. So we're looking at the Lake Auburn watershed. The gray lines here are the town boundaries, so here in the lower half of the watershed is the City of Auburn. The light green line around the lake itself, the ponds and the tributaries, that's a four-hundred-foot buffer. And the kind of pinkish color is what the current ordinance restricts development, again, just to within three hundred feet of waters and where soils are seventy percent or more sandy. So that impacted only two hundred and fifty-seven acres within the watershed. The proposed ordinance expanded it out to three hundred feet from surface waters with those profiles five, six, and eleven per the state regulations, but you can see in yellow here that it greatly expanded where those soils might be, just in the way that the rules are written. So that increased it to nearly the entire area. There's only a few spots that it, that it doesn't include. There's only a few spots that it doesn't include to about a little over 1,800 acres. So like I said, there's likely an underestimate of about 23 potential new buildings by this approach. That was the trickiest. The rest of the changes to the model were pretty straightforward. So like Eric said, we also incorporated changes to zoning. So the rural residential zone, which was 873 acres, was rezoned to low-density country residential in the Auburn portion of the watershed, and that increased minimum lot size from one to three acres for those areas. And like Eric said, the intent was to counteract the relaxation of development restrictions with that septic system siting condition change. And then Eric also mentioned this, change of the phosphorus control ordinance. So that was an expansion to require phosphorus control plan for any new building construction of 200 square feet of ground floor or more. It was originally 575 square feet or more. That change really only applies to accessory buildings or additions. So, you know, changing that ordinance from 575 to 200 square feet, it's really not capturing primary building development, which is really what the model captures. So we weren't able to specifically model that change because of the scale of the model. But certainly, it should be generally captured in the low-impact development adjustments that were made within the model, you know, across the board for all new potential development. There were just some other model adjustments that were made that don't reflect the proposed ordinance changes. It was more making little adjustments to more accurately represent current application of ordinances. So in further discussions with the city, we excluded new development in the agriculture and resource protection zone. And, you know, in consulting with Eric, it was obvious that some of the existing ordinance rules provide fairly restrictive standards for new development and that there are very few new development that are actually approved within that zone, you know, looking back 10, 20 years. So we removed all new development from that zone and input it as like a zone-wide building restriction in the model. And just as a note of how that affects, you know, comparing to the previous model, it removed 74 projected new buildings from that initial baseline model run. So the next few slides, I'll be showing maps comparing the model results from the original baseline model. And those maps will always be on the left here. And then compared to the new model run, which will be the maps on the right. So these particular maps show development constraints that basically all the spatial data that's input to the model. And everything remained generally the same except for the attributes that I just highlighted here in the red boxes. So this relates to the septic siting. So the red here are Auburn soils that are less than 36 inches to groundwater or some limiting factor. And you can see that in the red areas through here. And then in this gold-yellow color, that would be Auburn soils in sandy soils within 300 feet of surface waters, which you can see along this tributary here. And if I kind of just focus in on an area so you can better compare how things have changed, you'll see here that the change to how we're classifying soils and what's acceptable for those septic systems to be sited on, at least within 400 feet of surface waters, that we have a bit more area, a lot more area, actually. If you remember a few slides ago, it was about 257 acres originally. And now it's over 1,800 acres affected within that 400-foot buffer. So that was a change. And then if you focus in on this area between the two maps, you'll notice that restriction to limiting factor, you know, shown originally here, all this area would be excluded from septic systems. That has been relaxed in these areas where now it's 12 inches to a limiting factor. And then it's probably hard to see on your screens, but the agriculture and resource zone is also noted on here. It's just like a semi-transparent overlay because it is such a big zone within this portion of the watershed that it's just an overlay across here. And all of that was excluded from development as well. So these next set of maps are essentially the inverse of the previous maps. So while the maps you just looked at showed areas restricted from development, these maps shows areas where new development can occur and are color-coded by the different zones in each town. So there were no changes to the headwater towns. It was only Auburn. So I'll kind of zoom in here so you can focus more in the Auburn portion of the watershed. We removed, from potential development, like I said, the agriculture and resource protection zone. So that's shown as green in this original model run. And then we converted the rural residential zone to low-country residential. And so the difference in buildable area within Auburn, within the watershed, was reduced by about 955 acres. 27 acres are directly related to the ordinance changes. Because remember, much of that is our change in assumption that the agriculture and resource protection zone would have potentially more development in our original model run. And then these maps show the final results, showing both existing buildings as the yellow dots and then projected new buildings in red. So there were fewer projected new buildings with the proposed ordinance changes. You can kind of see, you know, the red dots. There was a higher-density cluster here that's less apparent with the ordinance changes. So specifically, the number of new projected buildings were reduced by 155, and 58 of those were directly related to the ordinance changes. So overall, this was deemed a successful outcome because it meant that the increase in minimum lot size more than offset the relaxation of septic system siting conditions in the watershed. And then here are the water quality results based on that change in development in the watershed. And I just show the existing, the different scenarios, just a subset of the different scenarios that were part of that original comprehensive study. So the existing baseline that we calibrated the model to 2020, the current load to the lake is 842 kilograms per year of phosphorus with an inlet concentration of 8.3 parts per billion, a low bloom risk of 10%, with a few taste and odor complaints, really no filtration waiver violation risk and no filtration plant needed. Now, when we ran the model, this would be no code changes. This is the baseline model run for the future projected out to 2,100. This is where we were seeing the load increase to 943 phosphorus kilograms per year of phosphorus with an inlet concentration of 9.4 parts per billion. That increased the bloom risk to 40%. Taste and odor complaints were more likely with a low risk of filtration waiver violation risk. Filtration plant would likely not be needed, but potentially borderline for taste and odor because of this higher bloom risk. So then comparing these original results with the results that came out of incorporating the proposed ordinance changes, again, we're projecting out to the end of the century. We did see about a six-kilogram-per-year reduction in phosphorus and a reduction of about 0.1 parts per billion in the inlet phosphorus concentration, a slight decrease in bloom risk. Complaints are possible for taste and odor. The risk for filtration waiver violation remains low. And again, likely no filtration plant needed, potentially for taste and odor. But you are entering a new lower bracket here. So although, you know, although this is a small change, you know, we are entering a new probability bracket for the bloom risk, and it is lowering it slightly. So overall, you know, it was deemed fairly successful. But this is our ultimate goal for the end of the century, to meet a load of no more than 900 kilograms per year of phosphorus, trying to achieve a nine inlet concentration of nine parts per billion or less, to try and get that bloom risk down to 10% or 20% or less, if possible, to try and minimize the risk of taste and odor and the waiver violation. And so that a filtration plant shouldn't be needed. So in conclusion, there were probably too many messages that you can take away from this new model run. First, the proposed ordinance changes were effective at achieving a net reduction in development potential within the Auburn portion of the watershed. And then second, to meet that goal of 900 kilograms per year phosphorus load in the future at full buildout, additional changes to development strategies that limit total phosphorus export will be needed. So while the city of Auburn has taken valuable action to put phosphorus controls in place on new development, you know, these results do show that the goal really will be difficult to meet without the cooperation of those headwater towns to implement some level of similar development strategies that control phosphorus in the watershed coming from those headwater towns into the lake. So that's all I had for you tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
First of all, thank you very much for everything. I mean, going back at this again, I'm sure we all have some questions. Just want to the council, we'll have action items and ordinances on the agenda in the next coming weeks. But this is a great time for us to ask some data-specific questions or action item questions on the data itself. Does anybody have any? Mr. Counsel Milks?
Did you do any evaluation of changing of septic systems on existing houses?
We did not. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, no, that's okay. That's the question.
Oh, I thought Eric was chiming in. That was something that we discussed with the city as a potential consideration for a future model run. But we didn't incorporate it in this model run.
Is it safe to assume that any failing septic system under the old standard that's replaced with a new, higher-standard system would be a net benefit to the lake?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Just hard to quantify or define exactly on a kilogram basis what that could be.
Right.
Any other questions from the council, please? Counsel Staples?
Sure. So in the July planning board meeting, there was a presentation that discussed a possible number of houses that could be built around the lake with different conditions. And one of the conditions that was discussed was limiting any new roads to be built around the lake to allow access to maybe backlot housing developments, I believe. Was any of that used for any of these models by FB Environmental? I didn't see it in the report.
Yeah. Yeah, so the way the models are set up, you know, for the build-out portion of the model, they do consider existing roads. You know, we're only, we were only interested in the full build-out. So, you know, the max endpoint, time point. But the model itself, if you were to choose a different time point between now and the full build-out, you know, it does consider road placement in where new buildings would more likely be built in closer proximity to existing roads, right? Now, when I incorporate that into the water quality model portion, we are considering for every new home that's built in the watershed that a small amount of additional roads would be constructed to essentially access those new buildings. But that was a discussion point that came up with the city when we were pulling this model together. And I did include it as a footnote in our final memo to the city that if we were to, you know, run this model again in the future, that maybe we would take a closer look at that because the city made that exact point of new development in the Auburn portion of the watershed might construct less new roads than historically. So our assumptions of kind of taking, you know, looking historically how much road per existing building in the watershed might not be so applicable moving forward. So I think for this model run, we weren't able to adjust for that. I was trying to sort of minimize a lot of those model adjustments so that the results wouldn't be so confounded when we're trying to compare to the original baseline. But certainly something to consider for future model runs.
And if I could just add to that, we did have a lot of discussion about it. And I think, Laura, correct me if I'm wrong, Laura was assuming between one and 1.7 acres, including new road as sort of cleared or developed area as part of the construction of each additional house lot. And I think that that gives me some confidence in the model being conservative in its estimates, conservative in the sense that what we're seeing is between a third and a half an acre of developed area for most of the phosphorus plans that we received. So we're seeing a smaller developed area per house lot. The fact that it's modeled with a larger developed area, I think, gives us some cushion and shows that it's conservative. We also have very intentionally limited the depth of residential strips in the ag zone in particular, but especially in the Lake Auburn watershed, to discourage or prevent the construction of new roads. So I think if you're using kind of a statewide average, we are absolutely going to see less construction of new roads with our restrictive ag zone controlling the depth of those residential developments. So I think it overestimates to some degree, but in the, with the goal of being cautious about the impacts, I think it gives some comfort in the model.
Thank you. Any other questions, please? Counsel Whiting?
Just a question on the forestation in terms of the build-out that you, analysis that you did. Do you have any idea of a percentage of forestation that would be in Auburn in that area after the full build-out?
I think I only do have an acre per 73.
Yeah, that's a good question. I can easily tease that number out and pass it along. I don't have that number off the top of my head. I know we did, we were looking at that with the comprehensive report, percentage watershed-wide percentage forested area. So I can pull that out for this model run.
I think maybe the better number to look at, because there's a couple of variables that will affect your number, Counsel Whiting, i.e. that will affect your number, Council Whiting, i.e. the historical law pack logging practices on their land has now been stopped. So that has to be reforested naturally. I think if we look at it as the total amount of acreage cleared with LID multiplied by the total number of potential new housing lots over the next eighty years, for example, I believe we can now bring in, was it seventy-three potential homes within the watershed? Lot of numbers. What was the max new eighty-year buildout with the revised proposed ordinances?
Yeah, it reduced the number of new buildings by one hundred and fifty-five.
So the net new number?
The net new number. The net new number is, sorry about that, I didn't have the report open.
It's a lot of numbers tonight.
I know. The net new number, number of buildings, right?
Just in Auburn.
In, oh, just in Auburn. Just in Auburn, it would be eighty-five.
So eighty-five multiplied by max clearing standard for an LID lot, that could probably give us that number fairly quickly, at least back of the napkin.
And it is fewer than if we don't change the standard.
And I think that's a big takeaway. This is fewer homes than if we don't change the watershed standards that we currently have. So if I could, one follow-up, we have a schedule, is there any more questions to FB Environmental? Go Council Walker than Council Staples, please. Council Staples?
Yeah, so I would, I guess this isn't really so much for FB Environmental as for the council, is I would encourage us to, if we're going to take up ordinance changes, and I believe we are, I would prefer to see them all grouped into one ordinance change just to, just in order to eliminate the possibility that one thing fails and one thing passes. I think that that really confuses the situation. And, you know, to incorporate all of the different things here that FB Environmental has included in this study, I think there's possibly a few other things that are outside of possibly the septics and the density from one to three acres. There's a couple of other things here that maybe we could lump into that one ordinance change as well.
Yeah, I think what we can do going forward is, first of all, I think we need to have a workshop where we're going to have, make sure that we're encapsulating all the studies and all the years of research, and also look at action items. I agree, I'm not sure if we can do one ordinance for all changes, but one night for all changes and make them dependent upon each other, I do believe is possible. But I also simultaneously believe, and this is a point that we need to bring home very, very clearly, and the graphic illustrates this. We need to ask our partners in municipal government, and especially commissions such as Auburn Water District and the Lake Auburn Watershed Protection Commission, and compel them to abide by their charter to enforce standard ordinances throughout the watershed regardless of town. And that, if I remind the council, this is a process we started even before this council took effect, that we cannot first, we first must do before we ask others to do what we have it. In other words, we have to pass this, do the hard work, and then compel them to follow our lead. If doing anything less would be hypocritical. You're looking at this max buildout in Turner, and the way Turner is growing and that trajectory, which I know the initial study had, this is not a pie in the sky estimate. This is a reality estimate, and that will only get even further built out quicker if we put our ordinances in part in the Lake Auburn watershed without having the same ordinances in Turner. We will just displace future Auburn residents into Turner, Buckfield, Minna, and Hebron. So instead of an eighty-year run rate, that's going to turn into a forty-year run rate, roughly. So this is all, I think all four items need to be handled in one night or two nights at the same time, though concurrently, or else we would not be doing a service to the lake. And we also need to think about, and during our workshop, discuss replacing upon failure existing substandard septic systems throughout the watershed, and look at different mechanisms for how we can afford to make sure that happens. So there's about five really hot button topics that need to be addressed in workshop. If we do all this, is it safe to assume that we're actually going to, and compel the upper watersheds to adopt our ordinances? Is it safe to assume that that kilogram annual input in the lake will actually diminish below the nine hundred mark? I know it probably needs further analytics, but based upon what you're seeing and the growth patterns in the upper watershed towns?
Yes. Yeah, I would say, you know, even if those headwater towns implemented, you know, half of the lower impact development strategies that the Auburn portion has, that you'd be in very good shape and potentially more than meeting the water quality goal.
So we have to look at where the problem lies. We solved Auburn, we need to actually look at the upper watershed towns.
We do have an hourly rate established in the current contract where we could have that modeled. My goal in talking with you as the council is maybe we can continue that discussion, and that may be something that Law Pack or the Water District could fund or the City Council, but let's continue those discussions.
In the meantime, I think unless we hear any objection, we'd like to have a workshop in this next meeting if possible, Mr. Manager, and then followed quickly by the resulting votes. I'm not sure if anything needs to go in front of planning board anymore, if they've already completed their work.
I, we do need to bring the model back to the planning board to finalize a recommendation to the council on the one to three acre change in the septic standards.
Okay, that was just workshop, not voted.
That's in motion, but both boards need to see these results before making a final decision, was the way it was left.
Then let's make sure we have the schedule in front of us by September sixth, so we understand. I don't think we should be delaying this after a couple of years of research, actually going back to two thousand and five. So thank you very much. Is there any final questions?
Sorry, I would just recommend it would either be the next council meeting or the one after that, depending on, I think it's important to make sure we're getting all the information before you workshop, and then we workshop again.
As long as we have a schedule of events, just a schedule of what we can look forward to and properly plan. Okay. Thank you very much, and thank you very much for your work on this. I'm sure we'll be contracting with you again in the future.
Yes, thank you.
Could you also just list off the other partner agencies that worked, I believe, at subcontract level with FB Environmental?
Yes, the original comprehensive study, and I mentioned at the beginning in the presentation, but it was Horsey-Witten Group and the University of Maine, but FB is the one that's been doing the model work.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Great.
Thank you.
Next on tonight's agenda, public safety building. Mr. Wood, Assistant City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you is the executive summary. I have next to me, obviously, Chief Believe, Chief Moen, and the Fire Chief, Chief Chase. So we're presenting before you this evening the culmination of a number of meetings and workshops, which is the final presentation for, and the executive summary of the ad hoc public safety building and recommendation and report. So we have already outlined before, but just wanted to reiterate the timelines of this project started in two thousand and eleven, when the police department was temporarily relocated to City Hall. It is now obviously twenty twenty-two. A number of iterations and efforts have taken place over those years, but it has culminated to where we are this evening, which is a final recommendation for the next steps regarding the public safety package that we'll be presenting before you this evening. And I want to take a moment to give special thanks for the efforts that have been underway in two thousand and twenty-two with the creation of the ad hoc committee and the efforts of both staff, consultants, but not the least of which, the residents who were appointed to the committee, who brought forth extensive knowledge, extensive questions, and committed a number of hours to this process. So I just wanted to take a moment to thank them as well. So some of the things that this committee looked at during this roughly six-month, seven-month process was reviewing the data, reviewing the work of the consultants, reviewing the work of staff questioning, staff's reasoning and logic behind some of the decisions and helping us reevaluate some of the assumptions. And one of the key assumptions that was originally made when this most recent effort started in two thousand and twenty was the belief that a renovated central fire station would be more cost-effective and as efficient as, it would be more cost-effective and as efficient as a new public safety building and a new fire station. Through work with Woodard and Kern and extensive needs assessments by both departments, came to the conclusion that not only is it not as cost-effective to renovate, but it was certainly not going to yield the fifty-year lifespan that we're hoping to get from some of the newer facilities and that we have gotten from the facilities that are currently in operation. So one of the key takeaways from this recommendation that the residents of Auburn have helped us come to the conclusion of is that a new public safety building that encompasses both police and fire was really the best direction, both for the short-term needs and for the long-term viability of these stations. I looked at a number of other municipalities, Wells, Scarborough, Yarmouth, South Portland, even outside of Maine, looking at Dover, Manchester, Portsmouth. So really kind of did that due diligence, obviously, in a moment where the market has been changing quite a bit on materials and really trying to put together an apples-to-apples comparison. So these are the outlined kind of elements that the committee took a look at. Ultimately, the final recommendation was to move forward with a comprehensive public safety upgrade package that, most importantly, took care of Engine Two. I think we have talked extensively about the needs that are relevant at Engine Two, some of the safety challenges, both with hazards and also with just the design of the facility. So building an entirely new Engine Two but on the same footprint was the recommendation that was originally posed by Woodard and Kern and staff, and that was a recommendation that was ultimately accepted and is being presented to you here this evening. Next, we'll look at renovation of Station Five. That is our newest station, I believe it was built in nineteen ninety, nineteen ninety-two. It is functional in some respects, but obviously the technology and information around health hazards and mitigation has made tremendous strides since this building was built. So there are some opportunities to make some pretty robust renovations there, but ultimately a new building was not, was not needed. And then finally, the biggest piece and the biggest recommendation was a new public safety facility at the current location of Central Fire. This would be a joint facility of police headquarters and central fire and fire headquarters. This reimagined on the same footprint, that joint facility, and the previous council made an investment last year by purchasing the property adjacent to this facility to give us the needed room for expansion and growth. So if we did nothing, this outlines, I think, what we presented before, which is we would lose two point five million dollars in funding from Senator Collins that has been secured, obviously extensive health costs and risks for staff that are currently operating out of facilities that have been deemed to be insufficient, significant annual maintenance costs to address those failing systems that we know that are currently operating and those that will be failing in the near future. Difficulty growing Auburn and meeting the needs of all of the growth that we have been talking about and ensuring that Auburn is a place where individuals and businesses and families want to continue to come. And then obviously from a staffing level, retention and recruitment is a challenge. So what did the committee specifically look at? Was the original public safety design adequate to meet the current and future needs? And I think that's where we got, or that's where we examined the need for replacement of Engine Two, the renovation of Engine Five, and a completely new building. That's part of the public safety campus at the current location of Central Fire. And secondly, does the committee recommend that the city council vote to replace this before, or place this before the voters of Auburn in the form of a bond referendum to finance the public safety upgrades package? And the committee ultimately came to the conclusion that yes, they did want council to move forward, and they are in support of this option-one presentation. And obviously, I think one of the pivotal highlights that came from this committee was to explore all potential funding sources, to understand exactly what the impacts would be, to make sure to work with state and federal partners to continue to secure as much funding as possible, look at growth, look at alternative local funding sources as well to offset the cost to Auburn residents as much as possible.
So Mayor and Council, I did ask Brian to add a couple of slides into this, one of those being, you know, in the last thirty days, we certainly have received information based on the market rate adjustment that was done regarding from our assessing team that was not planned as this group was working through their numbers and the plan that they had before, and I'm bringing this before you. Based on that information and taking a look at what that impact on the taxpayer would be, I recommended that we take a different approach in phasing this program forward. Originally, the plan would be to bring back before you at the next council meeting a vote to move forward with a referendum question in November for the taxpayers to consider for this project. Based on the impact to our taxpayers, I'm recommending not to move forward with that at this time. I think what you will see at the next council meeting, I think the council should still move forward with adopting the plan from the ad hoc committee. I think acknowledging the work that they did is critical. It doesn't take away from their results that they found, it's just the timing is just not the right timing for us to move forward at this juncture. So what I would recommend is that you consider a phased approach. That phased approach would be that you could move forward with your Engine Two design, site prep in the next CIP budget. And then that would give you time to take a look at the full impact of the budget, taking a look at the full impact of the capital improvement plan. And then if the council sees that as a priority, you would move forward with that Engine Two phased approach when we start doing the budget and capital improvement in February, March of twenty twenty-three, be the FY twenty-four as Brian's indicated here. In two thousand and twenty-five, you can then consider, and again, this would take place in your, the previous, this is the FY twenty-five. So that means in two thousand and twenty-four, you would take a look at the CIP to do the buildout of Engine Two, again, under your capital improvement plan, as well as introducing the phased-in approach for the design of the public safety campus site at the current central fire station. All those steps could be done with capital improvement funding that the council could move forward with in the early on years, and being able to adjust to this based on what we're seeing with cost increases for some of these types of projects, hoping to see some of those numbers come down, and that would give you a chance to evaluate that moving forward. However, to move forward with the public safety campus buildout, that would need to go to referendum. That dollar value triggers the requirement to have taxpayers vote on that to determine if a project that that size could be moving, could move forward. And so we would do that, means that we would gear up for this, for this to come back to the taxpayers in November of two thousand and twenty-three to consider that project. So it's basically putting a pause on this, allowing it to still move forward through the capital improvement program, and it's really identifying the most critical the capital improvement program, and it's really identifying the most critical need right now, and that's Engine Two. And you can move forward with that with a capital improvement. Then obviously, if the voters did pass the public safety campus, then you would see that take place, and then you could determine whether or not you wanted to put the Engine Five renovation moving forward. And as Brian said, Engine Five is our newer facility. However, there is no separation between the sleeping quarters, when that was designed, and the equipment and the engine. It's very, it's just not safe for firefighters in there without some change. So evaluating this, this is a good approach to do that, indicates to the public safety ad hoc committee that their work is actually critical for us to move forward with. We appreciate their work. And it also indicates to our firefighters, our police officers, that we are moving forward with this. And then, most importantly, to our taxpayers, that we know the difficulty with this recent change for taxes, and let's take a little phased approach moving forward with this and bring this back before them in a year. Was there one more slide, Brian?
Yep, just one more slide, and I think it just really highlights, I think, a number of things that were already mentioned here, and it does give us the time, space to look at a number of other alternatives also as clearly articulated by the ad hoc committee when talking about some of the projects that we know that are going to be moving forward in the next 12 months, the next 24 months, looking at TIF funding, building into all of our TIF agreements, the ability to capture up to 15% for public safety facilities and needs. That's going to be a pivotal piece, and again, in offsetting some of those taxes and the mill rate. Obviously, we know there's quite a bit of planned and even some approved residential and commercial expansion. We fully anticipate more that we may not have in the pipeline right now, but with a number of the other changes that the council is considering, we know that there'll be continued growth. And we also don't know what the federal and state landscape will look like, but we certainly will continue to work with our congressional delegation at the state to make sure that we're exploring all potential opportunities. I think one of the things that we're highlighting and one of the things that we want to make sure that the public safety campus has available to it is the ability for our regional partners to use those and train those, train on those facilities as well, which makes us a prime candidate for some federal and state funding as well. So taking into account all of those, and hopefully, the lowering of some of the cost, at least of material, might make even more of a positive difference when looking at the overall cost of the project.
So that's my recommendation. Obviously, council, it's your decision. What you would, unless I hear any objection, what you would see at the next meeting would be, in order to adopt the ad hoc committee's report that you now have, including the executive summary, and acknowledge the work that they had done, and then you will not see this come back before you until CIP in, from March.
If I could make just one statement, I think I'm pretty sure, I'm speaking for the entire council at this point, I want to make sure that, Chiefs, you're thanked and your staff is thanked. In certain situations, they have been working in substandard conditions for quite a long time, longer than promised, it was never our intent, this council's intent, to keep kicking this can down the road. I think everybody knows this council is all about execution and really moving Auburn forward. So for that, I just want to extend to you and your respective staffs, that some of this stuff is beyond our control, but we do want to make sure that we have the flexibility needed in case the situation changes, that we can move forward in an expeditious manner, whether it be federal or state funds available, whether it be advantageous interest rates, or even a way to partially pay for this through a significant increase in commercial development. So just, we will be flexible, we will be adaptable. Any other questions or statements before we move on?
I'd like to say thank you to everything you've done. You really have brought a lot, a lot of information to us, and it's all been great at this point. And thank you, Mr. Manager. I think you've hit the nail on the head. We need to move cautiously, and we'll get there, it's just going to take us a little bit longer.
What year were you, '24 election? Is that what you're thinking?
So you would see this come back on a referendum, if the council still moved forward, you would see this a year from this November, this would go before the taxpayers. In '23, however, it's still a phased-in approach, which means it wouldn't be till 2026 before you would actually see that work be done at the public safety campus. Voters a year from this November.
So we're delaying everything by basically one year, with the option to truncate if needed. Okay, thank you very much. Keep us in, obviously you will keep us updated.
Thanks, Chiefs.
Thank you, Chiefs. Next on the agenda is communication. Does anybody have any important communication of and about the community they want to share right now? None being? Counselor Gary?
It's something that I'm not sort of sharing, but with the national night out being canceled twice, is it totally out the window or is it going to be rescheduled for a third time?
So the chief did indicate that they are working with the Powell Center, they're going to be doing some projects there. Unfortunately, with even the threat of weather, they weren't able to bring the Harley Band in, and so it was really difficult with weather predictions that were going forward. But they'll be doing some things neighborhood-wide, based off from Powell Center.
Mr. Manager, do you want to pivot now into your communications?
Almost.
Awesome, okay. We're going to move on to the first open session of the night. Members of the public are invited to speak to the council about any issue directly related to city business, city business, which is not on tonight's agenda. Members that would like to speak, please step up to the podium, give us your name, address, and let me your comments, two, three minutes, please.
Godberry, 179 Davis Avenue. Good evening, Mayor and city councilors. I've got a question when I just saw about the model for Lake Auburn. Did they take in that, the model, did they take in the birds that have droppings in the lake that create bloom? Have they considered, since the waters off our coast are heating up, that the lakes are heating up also? Is that in the model? I would like to know that. I don't know how you're going to contact me, but I would like to know that. Also, also, that farms in these tributaries with their fertilizer, or people taking care of their lawn near the tributaries, is that accounted for in the model? That all relates to what happens to that lake, and not just humans. It's nature too. I'd like to know that.
Mr. Ray, that's a lot of great questions, great points. It's there, covered in the model. What we'll do is, Mr. Manager just told me he has your contact information, we'll send those excerpts out to you so you can have the answers, so I don't misspeak, or any of us misspeak on those answers.
Okay, thank you very much. Have a great evening.
They'll be properly cited.
Yep.
Is there anybody else in the public who would like to speak?
Jim Lynch, 80 Shepley Street, Auburn. I've got a $55 million question. What I just saw on that display for Lake Auburn indicates that the current baselines don't require a water filtration system, but with the ordinances that you're adding doesn't guarantee that we may not need a water filtration system. We may. So the goal of that phase on that, do you have that display?
No, sir.
Well, the goal was to get back to the original baseline. So why are we adding, why are we endangering Lake Auburn's quality with these ordinances? Because with these ordinances, you aren't guaranteeing that you don't need a water filtration system.
Sir, if I could just, for, there is one column that says the do-nothing approach, which is maintaining our current ordinances will most likely lead to filtration. So, but everything can be fine, and it's on the website, the entire study and the revised study. So doing nothing will put it in danger. New ordinances diminish that danger.
Okay, but currently, it doesn't require a water filtration system. Is that correct?
Sir, no.
No.
It most likely will if we do nothing.
If you have that display, we could see that.
But this is public, and I probably said more than I'm actually allowed to say during public comment. The three scenarios, current baseline, projected with a do-nothing approach, our existing ordinances, and the revised ordinances, and the likelihood of losing a water filtration waiver are outlined within that study. And we can, if you'd like, if you can give Mr., maybe Mr. Holmes your email contact, we can email that to you if you'd like.
So you can guarantee that we won't need a water filtration system in the future for Lake Auburn? You're guaranteeing that?
Sir, we are not going to enter into a debate during public discussion.
This is a public discussion.
We will not enter into debate during public discussion, sir. Thank you.
This isn't a debate? I'm only asking.
Nobody can guarantee anything. We have to look at the science. The science says if you do nothing, sir, the science says if you do nothing, it is a higher likelihood we will need a filtration system. Please, refer to the study. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, anybody else who would like to speak?
Jennifer Goff, Lynch, Goff Hill, Goff Corner, 80 Shepley Street. So I got this in the mail, and it says, so I'm confused here. You are receiving this notice because the Auburn City Council will hold a public hearing on Monday, August 15th, at 7:00 p.m. to discuss the following, and you have the zoning map. Is that on the agenda?
No, ma'am, it's not.
How come?
Because what happened was because of state law, we have to send notification out within 14 days, but we had guidance from planning board and our attorneys to go back and redo the process over again and send out a new notification. So on behalf of staff, we do apologize, but we want to make sure, there's nothing we can do to pull that notification back. It was already made.
Will that occur?
I'm sorry?
Will you have a?
Oh, absolutely. We'll have a plan. So on September 6th, will be the first reading of this at the city council at 7 o'clock.
So when you say reading, is that for public input as well?
Yes, yes. Public input on September 6th, followed by September 13th at the planning board, which is a Tuesday, hold on, and then followed by September 19th for a second reading here. So there'll be three public comments, two at the city council, one at the planning board.
So another, so when I first got the first notice, like in the spring, affecting, you know, 500 feet from my property and all of that, so I had to, and then the list, you know, I'm sitting here reading this notice, and I'm like, okay. I had to read it for like 15 minutes to say, okay, is this Auburn? I'm doing, am I, is this from the city of Auburn? And have I gone down the rabbit hole? You know, so I'm not too crazy about this, and I really like what you did about public engagement for the traffic pattern. You're going and you're going to speak to different groups. You had a whole outline of public engagement. That has not occurred with the zoning. Why?
We actually have.
Where was the public engagement?
We've had several public engagements, I don't have the dates, but over the last two years, over 37.
Public engagement, what, Zooming during COVID?
No, in combination of both, ma'am. The last ones we had were at Fairview School.
But the first notice I ever got was in the spring as a resident. That's the only indication of zoning changes was that notice in the spring. By then, it was a done deal, as far as I'm concerned.
No, ma'am, we've had, we followed the law, we followed our own ordinances, and we followed precedents going back years.
Why didn't I get a notice for a public engagement?
And I'm not sure, and I can't answer that, okay? We don't mail. We can definitely look at that and make sure there's nothing wrong with our address file, and I'd ask the manager, and you live at 80 Shepley, correct? And we'll follow up with you on that to find out why. But I know there's been both of them.
But is there an opportunity to, for people to say, we don't like?
Of course.
I don't want a restaurant next to my house?
Of course.
I don't want a massage parlor next to my house?
September 6th.
I don't want a parking lot next to my house?
Yes, ma'am, September 6th, September 13th, and September 19th.
Okay, thank you.
7 o'clock.
I got the same notice, and we're sitting here and nothing's happening.
And that's, in the beginning of the meeting, I did acknowledge that because it looked like that, and I, we apologize, I was not aware of this until now. But no, the notifications, they were already out before the attorneys came in and said, start the process over, because it was a substantial change in the ordinance, which necessitated us to reschedule, and for that, I do apologize.
Okay, so I live on.
But ma'am, I'm sorry, we could have, you can come up next, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and now I don't, is it okay if I?
You can say anything about city business you want for three minutes, go.
Well, it'll maybe become apparent why when I start, and I timed, I thought it was five, I've never, okay, but I did time it.
City boards, five, city councils, three.
Okay. My name's Erica Goslin, and I live at 48 Houghton Street, I'm Ward Three. I want you to know a little bit about who's speaking to you, so bear with me for a moment. I've lived in Maine my whole life, I've lived in Auburn since 2005, I taught math at Lewiston High School for about 20 years. I'm now an assistant principal and oversee all of the special education at Montello Elementary School. I was raised by a couple of public servants, some of the wisest, kindest people you'd ever want to meet. My dad got the legendary trooper award this year, this past June. My mom worked for the Ed Muskie Institute, helping children in foster care. I learned a lot from being raised by a homicide detective and by a woman who worked with children in the foster care system. Both of my parents were in the Army, they met in the Army. I voted for some of you based on just some of that stuff alone, because I think it says a lot about a person. So just so you know, I am somebody who voted for you. I've come tonight because I'm unhappy with all of you and the lack of civic engagement. Did you want to finish your?
I served with your father.
Okay. Oh, you know Joseph Roy Olent?
Uh, Olent?
Yep.
Uh, yeah.
He's a lot older than you, but I'll check, yeah, I'll see if he knows you. I just didn't know I had a ticket at a show right now, but I'll, can I keep, I'll keep going. I have a problem with a lack of civic engagement, like other people who have spoken. I might have got some notification, it's hard. I'm a widow, I have a three and a four-year-old at home. You can say you've met the law, people aren't usually happy when people have an issue and somebody quotes to them about, I followed the law. You could maybe learn something about some customer service skills. I read over a memorandum that was sent to you from Dr. Firth from the Mercatus Institute back in December of 2020. What I don't like is feeling like you already have in your mind what you want, and you really, it wouldn't matter what I say right now, that's the vibe I get from you very clearly. Really doesn't matter what I say. I'll keep going. Here's some quotes from Dr. Firth to you. "My mental model of Maine residential demand is a segmented market. Some people want privacy, some want walkability. To expand walkable investment, the first and most important step is to repeal the wrong-headed anti-urban 20th century policies on the books. The most obvious of these are density restrictions. There are plenty of physically dense places that are unappealing to the walkability market because houses are depreciating and charm is missing. Much of Auburn's walkable housing stock is old. Old houses often have lead paint, jerry-rigged electrical wiring, and other hazards. Many are poorly insulated, they can also just feel old, creaky, worn, faded, instead of charming." One, it's a little unnerving to read this memorandum. Dr. Firth, are you here? Are your children here, Dr. Firth? Do you live here? I'm sure he's well-intended, I'm sure that all of you are well-intended too. I think you want to do what's best. I'm here to tell you, you're doing a bad job of it, though. I'm going to make some points that are not my own, I've stolen them from what I remember when I was doing my work on my master's degree. One piece of particular importance was around the seductive, the reduction, the reductive seduction of other people's problems. There's a real fallout when well-intentioned people attempt to solve problems without acknowledging the underlying complexity. You've all fallen short, I feel, on understanding the complexity. We do have an affordable housing issue that I'm fine with wanting to solve, absolutely fine with it.
Ma'am, I just, you're.
I don't, don't be a servant because you've fallen in love with solvability. Serve because you've fallen in love with complexity. Don't be a servant because you want to do something virtuous. Serve because you want to do something difficult. Don't do what you're doing because you want to talk. Do it because you want to listen. You are all servants to us, the public, you're not all acting like it. You know what I started doing over the years that really informed my practice? I started home visiting. Do you know how hard it is? Do you know how hard it is for me to be here tonight?
Ma'am, you have four minutes and 30 seconds.
Okay, here's something else about me. I'm a widow with a three and a four-year-old. I don't know if I can come in September and those, all those other dates. So along with raising a couple of pretty cute princesses, I take care of an entire household, and I work a pretty demanding job. Why aren't you all planning events for people to get to? Better yet, why aren't you out and about in the neighborhood you serve? My last point, since I'm an assistant principal overseeing special education, I'd have to guess Auburn is in a similar situation as Lewiston. And I don't know if you've thought about all the long-term consequences, and I can't tell, maybe you have. I'll say that. Maybe you've done a lot of things, and we just can't tell. And apparently, you don't care if we can tell or not.
Ma'am, thank you. I'll say for the record that all of our proceedings are televised, and those are the Planning Board. Numerous articles over the last four years about the subject have been printed, and our councilors are available for talk via email or phone, as well as myself and anybody in staff. Next, please.
I live on Lake Auburn Avenue. My name is Mary Fuller.
I'm sorry, ma'am, could you just pull that microphone a bit? Thank you.
My name is Mary Fuller, and I live on Lake Auburn Avenue. There's changes because I get these letters, but I don't understand what the changes are. I just want to know so that I can figure out how to address them also.
If you could give us your contact information, we'd have staff or your city council call you and talk with you about it. We'd love it.
I've called twice, nobody has called me back.
Who have you called? Do you know?
I called the city building and asked about.
Let's get your contact information, we'll make sure you get a call first thing in the morning. Is there anybody else who would like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Victoria Ballou, 106 Loxley Road. I just, I want to start by saying that I've had some concerns with the rezoning. I've talked to, I kind of forget his name, Blay, Mr. Blay. He sent me the website and the pages and pages of information that you guys have worked through. I personally appreciate all the work that has been done, but the residents of this town, the city, do not have the time. We don't live that work. We don't talk to our colleagues about it. We are not there when it's being written, and it's very hard to follow. I don't know if it would be possible. I've, I've been a teacher for 42 years. I've worked with younger kids, and I would see somebody taking the job on of taking this information and making it very straightforward and simple for people who are caring for young children, caring for aged parents, working full-time, so.
And regular people.
I don't know if that's possible, but that would be good.
No, thank you.
So a lot of work has been done on the watershed project. I'm impressed. I've never come to one of these meetings. I'm impressed with a lot of the people that have spoken. One thing that troubles me a little bit is you're comparing the do-nothing approach with the change in the ordinance, and you were actually pretty emotionally invested in that when you were talking to that gentleman. Why, why couldn't there be a third option? I know that when you work really hard on something, it's terrible to have people come in and question you. I know that, but people are questioning it. Why can't there be a third option? When I see that we have a 10% risk now of bloom, but it's going to go up to 30 to 40%, that worries me. And we talk about risk, what is an acceptable risk? This is our drinking water. I was trying to ascertain from the lady that was speaking, what, what is the, what would cause that increase in bloom? I think what I got from that was she said that the towns, I forget how you say that, but the towns above the watershed, if they don't do something, that's going to impact Lake Auburn. They don't get their water from Lake Auburn. So what is their, why do they, why should they even care? So we're, we're just sort of plodding down this road, and we're going to be, well, it's probably going to happen, and then we'll just have to do this. I don't know if that's acceptable. So I guess my question is, why isn't there a third or fourth option that we could look at as well?
Ma'am, thank you. And just so, for clarification, we do, through Auburn Water District or the Lake Auburn Watershed Protection Commission, have the legislative authority at the state level to compel the towns in the watershed to adopt ordinances to protect the lake. So, yes, but we can't, in good faith, ask them to do something that we ourselves can't do. So that was, that was option if you would. That's not, that wasn't model, that was option probably four or three. So by adopting something versus doing nothing, we could then compel the upper watershed towns to do something, because right now they do nothing.
I love that they would have to do what we do.
I think it would be fair.
Let's just do the best thing.
Yes, that's, thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? None? I'll close this first open session, there'll be another one. Next, we have Order 115-08012022, authorizing the marketing of city-owned property located at 115 Newberry Street, parcel ID 221-055. This is presented at the August 1st meeting, but due to a mix-up with the street and parcel numbers, we tabled it to right now. Do we have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Second. Motion, uh, excuse me, motion from Counselor Walker, second from Counselor Whiting. I'll open this up to the public for comment. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak? None being? Bring it back to council, council. Debate, discussion? None being, I'll ask for vote at this time. All those in favor, please, raise your hand. All those in favor? Opposed? None, pass to 7-0. Next, we have Order 116-08012022, authorizing the marketing of city-owned property located at 103 Newberry Street, parcel ID 221-058. Do I have a motion?
Motion to sell.
Second.
Second by, first by Counselor Walker, second by Counselor Moore. Anybody in the public like to comment on this? None being, I'll bring it back to the council, council. Oops, sorry. Oh, no, someone from the public other than Counselor Titus.
Reform, be totally quiet, come on.
You've got 30 seconds.
I applaud more of this going on. I mean, that was one of my priorities when I was a councilor, was to get more cities' property off from the, on, back onto the tax roll. But I think what it'd be nice to do is, maybe I didn't see it in the packet, is a review of the process that we're using to market those properties.
Counsel, ask for a vote. Any, all those in favor? Oppose? Pass to 7-0. Next is Order 49-04042022, authorizing the proposed charter amendments to be placed on a referendum ballot and submitted to the voters of Auburn at the November 8, 2022 election. It's a public hearing and vote. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second, Counselor Staples. Anybody in the public like to speak on this? None being, bring it to the council for debate, comment? None? Vote? Oh, Counselor Staples.
Yeah, I, I think that these are fairly minor amendments, and I just, when, when it goes to the voters, I would like to have the city staff maybe come up with just a little bit of literature about explaining what the, what the amendments are, plain English. I think it's pretty self-explanatory if you read it, but still, more, more information is better.
Very good, thank you. And they were primarily clerical. All those, excuse me, all those in favor? Opposed? Pass to 7-0. Next, we have Order 122-08152022, approving, excuse me, the Incorporated Civic Organization liquor license application for the City of Auburn for the Riverwalk Blues and Brews Festival, scheduled for September 10th, 2022, in Festival Plaza Main Street. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion, Counselor Walker, second. Staples. Anybody in the public like to speak? Maybe we'll let that happen after Mrs. Bonig, because her downtown coordinator just gives us a preview of what this is so we know what we're voting for.
Sure. So September 10th, we have the Riverwalk Blues and Brews Festival presented by Emerson Toyota in Festival Plaza. It'll be very similar to our New Year's celebration. We'll be closing down a portion of Main Street. We have five blues bands, we have six breweries, we have three food trucks, and hopefully it's a gorgeous day like it was today. So that's, we can go before the state up to five times a year with a permit like this for us to serve alcohol at our events, so that's, this would be one out of five.
Do we have a commercial?
I don't have the commercial.
We'll circulate that.
I'm gonna, I'll send it tomorrow. The final version should be done tomorrow.
Okay, we have a commercial that'll be airing on WGME shortly. So we'll make sure you all have it and can spread it, but it's pretty good. All those in favor? 7-0 passes, thank you. Next, we have Order 123-08152022, authorizing the city clerk to waive the $75 business licensing fee, peddler license, as requested by the Maine Blues Society for the Riverwalk Blues and Brews Festival that's scheduled for September 10th, 2022. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Counselor Gary, second by Counselor Walker. Anybody in the public like to speak on this? None being, bring it back to the council. We're pretty lucky to have the Blues and Brews Festival Association. Want to explain that for about 10 seconds?
Yes, yeah. The Maine Blues Society is rebranding, revamping. They are helping us promote our event, and we hope that they will continue to be a great partner for this event.
I'd like to ask for vote. All those in favor? Opposed? None being, pass to 7-0. Next, last open session of the night. Members of the public are invited to speak to the council about any issue directly, directly related to city business, which is not on tonight's agenda. Members, please come to the podium, let me your comments for three minutes, and give us your name and address. None being, I'll close the last open session. On reports, I just have one thing to report.[1718.54]